Good afternoon, everyone. Everybody's ready? Could we have, we're gonna have our invocation by Pastor Jack Maraz. Here, let me just talk into it. Okay, so small, I can't even see it this close, thank the Lord. Thank you, Mayor. Let me get my glasses on. I'm sorry, I thought I was ready and he just surprised me. There we go. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to gather once more for this City Council meeting. We ask you to bless our mayor, City Council members with wisdom, knowledge, that they may make the right decisions concerning the city of Los Banos. We also ask you to keep your hand on protection upon our police, fire, and medical responders as they go about their daily duties. And Lord, help us, the people of this community, to show love and kindness to our neighbors, to strangers that we meet, that we may find favor in your eyes, Lord. Lord, please bless this city of Los Banos with peace and prosperity, and we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen, amen, amen. Thank you.
I'll call this meeting to order at 6:01. We'll have Police Chief Breezy to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
President.
Lamper.
Here.
Lewis. Wallace.
Here.
Correa.
We have a quorum. Now I'd like to take a, get a motion for the consideration of approval of the agenda. Mr. Jones?
So moved.
Second? Mr. Lamas?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Prove agenda has been approved. We move to our next, gonna be presentation of several recognitions. Well, I'll come down to the podium down there. Do we have Mario here in Quiz? This is a certificate of recognition presented to Mario Enquez. Enigus, okay, thank you, from Maynard Mechanic One Public Works Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banos, and for being named Employee of the Month for the month of July 2022. Thank, and we appreciate your service. Thank you. Our next ones, I believe I could just probably call them all down here all together, the track team, Los Banos High School Track Team, Patrina Gillard. Or Gilardi, I'm sorry. Sydney Robertson. Crystal Hernandez. Ben Hoffman. And Emma Van Looben, which, okay. Okay, gotcha. All right. So the first one, we're gonna, Patrina Gilardi, she here? Okay, so you are Sydney. Crystal, okay. All right, so the first one we're gonna present here is a certificate of recognition presented to Sydney Robertson, Los Banos High School Track Team, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing first in all-league in the shot put event in the San Joaquin Western Athletic Conference. Thank you so much. Our next one is Crystal Hernandez. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Crystal Hernandez, Los Banos High School Track Team, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing first in all-league in the 1600-meter event, and for placing third in the 400 times 400-meter event in the San Joaquin Western Athletic Conference. We thank you all. Is there anyone here representing or come here for Ben Hoffman? Or Patrina Gilardi? Okay, we'll hold those to the side. And of course, Emma. Okay, all right. And I'll just read those out for them also. So for Emma Van Looben, Los Banos High School Future Farmers of America, in recognition of your achievements in the various Future Farmers of America sectionals you have participated in, and for placing fifth in the nation in dairy cattle enter entrepreneurship. We thank her for all of her future endeavors with the Future Farmers of America. Our next one is Patrina Gilardi, Los Banos High School Track Team, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing first in all-league in the 300-meter hurdles event, and for placing third in the fourth and 100-meter event in the San Joaquin Western Athletic Conference. Thank you very much, Patrina. This is Ben Hoffman, Los Banos High School Team, in recognition of your outstanding sportsmanship and for placing first in all-league in the 400-meter event, and for placing fourth in the 400-meter event in the San Joaquin Western Athletic Conference. Thank you very much, and we'll get these two. Do we have a representative for Senate? Okay.
You know, can I face this way, is that better, should I face you guys?
Either way. Yeah.
Okay, because y'all can all hear me anyway. So is Sophie here and Sandra? Oh, there they are. Okay, you guys, the Senator has what she called the Young Legislators Program every year, and so, Sophie, you wanna come up? We have our shirts on, they were designed by one of the girls in my office, and what it is, is a program that goes four weeks, so let me just go through the.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, yes. Okay, so the Young Legislative Program for this year, there we go, thank you. And this just shows where the Senator, where her district actually is, these are the areas. And the actual program that we had, it was four sessions, Friday, June 10th, June 17th, 24th, and then on July 1st, he went to the Capitol. One of the sessions that we had that started all off was the intro to government, and so we had Congressman Jim Costa, San Benito County Supervisor B. Gonzalez, City of Kingsborough Councilmember Jewel Hurtado, and then Gonzalez Unified School District Board Trust, Board of Trustees Celeste Daniel. And then session two, we had Alan Brooks from the NAACP in Merced, also a Realtor and a small business owner. We had Heather Walker Jantsch, she's an educator, therapist, advocate, advocate, and from Jantsch Family Therapy, it's her business. And then our final session that we had, someone to speak with the students was, we had Gina Martinez, this was elections and civic engagement. In the middle there is actually my new CEO, Luis Quinones, he is at the Capitol office there with the Senator. And then we had Ryan Gonzalez, he actually was with the YLP, the Young Leadership Program, a couple of years ago. So did you learn a lot from?
I did, I learned a lot of leadership skills, mostly, and responsibility, and how to engage with our communities more openly, and to be more comfortable in our own, you know, bodies and skin, so.
Great.
It was a good experience.
Thank you, yeah, we were hoping that it was. The next part of it, we started off with the life cycle of a bill. So then it was quite a bit too, I'm not gonna go through a lot, so we're just gonna kind of flip through here the life cycle of a bill, you can see all the different steps, you know, and who knew there was so much for the life cycle of bill? As I've been working with the Senator's office, I can see a lot of times something will come up and we'll think, oh yeah, that's a great bill, and it has to go back and be amended so many times, sometimes it takes a really, really long time for it to become a bill. And this is some of the bills that the Senator was working on last year, and some of them still that right now she's working on. We went through, speaking with the students all about why vote, was that something that you felt was pretty interesting as well? Okay, and then we had to register our voters that was there, that kind of went through, actually, right now, we had all of our students know they could actually register online to vote, so that when it comes time to register, so did you do that?
I actually did. I got my little ballot, so they said that I can vote next, the next presidential election.
Oh, great, great. Okay, and then Michelle Canellas came from our office, she actually works at the, works with the, at the Capitol with the Senator, working on a lot of the bills. And then we had the mock hearing, so how did you like that?
I actually really liked it because I consider myself more of a leader. Even in my school, I was actually secretary for LULAC for last year's school year, and I actually really like engaging with students and just learning about where we come from, our roots. So that was a really good experience for me to develop more leadership skills and even speaking skills too.
And it was really good for me just to see, because they actually went through a trial, you know, if there were an actual trial where each of them played a part, you know, so it was really, really interesting to see. And then we were able to actually go to the Capitol. And there they are, on the Senate floor, Galerias, all the students, we had such a great time. And then they got their certificates in front of, in front of the Capitol at the park before we left. And then the one other thing that I want to add, one of our chaperones was actually her mom, Sandra. Sandra? You did not know this, but we thank you, I want to thank you so much, on behalf of the Senator, I have a certificate for you. Okay, and this says, okay, in recognition of your valuable participation as a chaperone of Senator Cabirro's Young Legislators Program, Capitol trip, thank you so much for taking the time to help invest in our youth. And that's the end of our presentation, what we do want to say to all of you is that we'd love to have some more students coming from Los Banos. So next year I'm gonna push it a little harder, you know, so you guys can let everybody know, your people, your relatives, your, you know, and kind of bring it up a little bit more maybe at the meetings, so that we can have more students, because it was so, it was so rewarding for us.
It's a good opportunity.
And a great opportunity. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, that concludes our presentations, and we'll move to our public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of the public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation, detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber's information table. At this time, I would like to invite the public to come forward and speak.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council members in the city of Los Banos, and to you people out there watching on Channel 96. My name is Jerry Canuster, I'm with the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, I'm the current president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to present to you some of the events that we're gonna be sponsoring and happening here between now and the end of the year for Christmas here. First off, I'd like to talk to you about the Los Banos Christmas Toy Drive. This is something that Mr. Dominic Sandoval from Wood Creation, there he is. He's gonna be doing this, this program on 17 December 2022, it's Saturday, and it starts at 10:00 a.m., Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, and all the else will be there handing out presents. If you have any question, please see Mr. Sandoval. Let me give you your email address, it is losbanoschristmastoydrive@gmail.com, or you can contact him at 209-635-4872. Okay, all right. And the next item here is we want to thank Sutter Health for being a sponsor of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce Tomato Festival that we had Saturday, August the 6th. This wasn't the regular tomato festival that we normally have every year, this was like a tomato festival light, just a little bit on there, because we needed to generate some cash flow and some income, so that we had the tomato festival light. And we'd like to thank the Sutter Hospital for being a sponsor for that event, thank you very much for that. The next big event for another quality of life that we want to offer is the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce Fall Street Fair. And that's gonna be happening September 17th, 2022, Downtown Street Fair from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There'll be normally the food, the music, the arts and craft, it's just for the whole family, and we're looking for vendors. So if you want to be a vendor, if you know somebody that wants to be a vendor, contact us at the Chamber of Commerce at 209-826-2495, and talk to Michelle, the executive director, and she will get you to be a vendor on that one. The next item that we're gonna be offering and presenting, this is a free event, and this is called a trunk or treat. And that will be happening on Thursday, October 20, starting at 6:00 p.m. downtown Los Banos on Sixth Street. And there'll be a Halloween costume and trunk decoration contest, if you want to participate with a trunk decoration contest, come and see me or come see the chamber, we have the registration form for your car to do the trunk and treat. And then lastly, this is the big event, this is called the Christmas Parade, and the title, the theme title for the Christmas Parade is gonna be Christmas Lights, Winter Nights, Christmas Lights, Winter Nights. This is a presentation that we'll do, we do every year. Every year, when we do this Christmas Parade, it's always on a Friday, the first Friday of the month of December. This time, because commuters have asked me, why do we do it on a Friday night when they're commuting and they can't come home until about 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock at night, and they can't participate with the Christmas Parade? So this year, we're gonna try something different, we're gonna do it on a Saturday, okay? Saturday from, which time is right in here? Like I said, I don't have the time on here, but anyway, it's gonna be from 5 o'clock till whenever. So it's gonna be Saturday, and listen, commuters, I need you to pay attention here. You call me and you tell me that you like to have it on a Saturday, and you tell me how you like it. If I don't hear from the commuters, that they like this program on a Saturday, next year, we're gonna go back to Friday. So do yourself a favor, do me a favor, let me know if you like Saturdays for the Christmas Parade, okay? And we're looking for sponsors for the Christmas Parade, and, oh, by the way, this is the first year that we're also gonna charge $10 a float. Every year it's been always free, now it's $10 a float, cost gone up. Right, Stacy? Cost has gone up, so we have to cover for that. And we're looking for sponsors, we have now a three-tiered program for sponsor, a $3,000 platinum sponsor, a gold sponsor is 2,500, silver sponsor is 1,500, so if you want to be a sponsor, these are all the benefits here that you'll get. You'll get your logos and all the good stuff, come and see me, but there's some good stuff here if you become a sponsor. And we also have a friend of the parade sponsor, you have absolutely nothing to gift here except a handshake and thank you, being a friend of the sponsor for the chamber, so, all right, so that's it for my spiel.
Thanks very much.
Hello, my name is Amy Benias, I am here once again to speak on behalf of those in our community who are experiencing homelessness. I would like to briefly reiterate my gratitude, my passion, and suggested solutions. Again, thank you to the city of Los Banos for allowing the homeless containment area to exist. This designated space allows community members like me, as well as social workers, clinicians, alcohol and drug counselors, medical personnel, and those in the criminal justice field to contact individuals and provide necessities or program linkage in an efficient and productive manner. The homeless containment area is one I visit often. I was just there this morning alone handing out water. My passion in life is to help people, and those who are unhoused are high on my list. I came here to say that I fear that the containment area will be forced to close down because of community complaints. This would be detrimental to those living there, as well as to the city as a whole. Instead of having one place for these people to live and access, these people, my friends, as I call them, would relocate and they would pick several different locations throughout our community to do so. This would end up costing the city valuable time, money, and resources. Please consider keeping the containment area as it is, as is, until viable solutions are achieved. Several other cities throughout the state of California have problems solved to find ways to house the unhoused. Since the last time I was here, the Modesto B reported in an article six days ago that Modesto implemented a successful homeless program which generated 79 people to housing. As a result, the city is investing more money to continue their efforts to get and keep people from living on the streets. We need homes for the unhoused. Until then, we need to allow my friends, our friends, a space to call their own. We need positive resolutions and results before closing the homeless containment area. Please help to house the abused, defenseless, and most vulnerable population of Los Banos, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Domingo Sandoval, and I represent Sandoval Wood Creations, but I'm not here to talk about my business. I am here to talk about my third annual Christmas toy drive. This is, this is put together by my family and a couple friends. Last year, I assisted 547 families, I would help the community ask for toys and everything. So total kids, as they did last year, 3,455 kids. Our goal today is to make 1,000 families, and it's only put in together by my family and a couple friends. What I asking you guys is to help me out to make this goal, the 1,000 families. 1,000 families, you're talking about 6,000 to 7,000 kids, only in our community, you're talking about Los Banos, around the voting. You guys know downtown have 23 kids in the downtown area, they deserve to have toys. And this is for the people, it means the need is people that have any, you know, prefer to buy food instead of buy toys. So what I want for you guys, to you guys know people, you guys know somebody that can say, hey, you know what, I gotta donate these toys, you can come to us. And the good thing, I have a support for the Chamber of Commerce to be. to be our warehouse, to actually leave all the toys in there. Last year, actually, I used my living room, my kitchen, my wire, actually not have nowhere to put our Christmas tree. And actually, I was only have a space to sleep, to have all these toys in the house. And my wife and my kids start folding all the presents and separated by, you know, by age and boy or girl. So for this, I'm here to, you guys can help us out to make this better. And last year, actually, the police department helped me out and to, you know, to make this mild to kids. What I ask you is, you guys, you guys know somebody that can donate toys. You're talking about 6,000 kids in it. Help me out to make these, those baños better. You know, to have every smile to every single kid in this town. It's a lot of people are in need right now. You know, it's a lot of people that hurt ours being cut. You know, I prefer to pay for my food, and I can't afford a backpack. I can't afford anything. So my toy drive only, it's only for our little kids. It's for up to 17 years old, because it's still kids. So in these kind of kids, I give you a sweater. I give you, she's a female, I give you makeup. But it's still kids for me. You know, please, help me out to make this very successful. It's my third year, and it's more to come. And I only ask you guys to help me out to make it. And I have Mrs. Claus. And what's going to happen is all the families got to come to us, and it's got to tell me the reason why, needs, what the reason why you need the toys. You know, I can't put you so many stories that I have for past couple years. Very sad. But I'm here to make this sadness and making smiles. And with Mrs. Claus here, Mr. Claus, Mrs. Claus is not here. It's actually surgery, having surgery. But with Santa Claus here, so I just got to make a lot of smiles. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it, Mr. Sandoval.
Merry Christmas. Keep the Christmas spirit alive, everyone. Take a good time.
Thank you.
How are you doing? My name's Peter Minor, Las Bannas resident. You're going to hear the probably three sides of the story of homelessness here. You're going to hear people wanting to help and do good, which of course we all want. You're going to hear people that are pissed off where they live at and how they're living, which is understandable. I'm going to be kind of the middleman. I have been homeless. I've been out there, and I've seen how it is. And there are very few people that want to get better and get off the streets. Most of them like being out there. Most of them enjoy being out there. Most of them don't want help. It's a very few select that are out there that really want to help. Those are the ones that we need to reach. Those are the ones we need to help. There's got to be a vetting system of some kind. We have, I hope I'm not talking too fast, but we have Project Rim King. We have Bridge House. I tried getting into those places. Couldn't get in. Couldn't get in. They kept on putting me off, telling me I was 200th. Telling me I was second, then I was fifth, then I was eighth. Finally, I had to shake the tree. I talked to a lot of people. I called up David Carr. I called up Dr. Metcalfe. Called up John Spieback, who wrote the article. I talked to our police chief here. I talked to Helene Mitchell. I talked to everybody I could. I was put in there within a couple of days. Talked to the guy, went in the intake, never once they say, hey, this is what we're going to do for you. We're going to help you get work. Do you need an ID? Do you need social security? Do you need anything to help you get into a job? And then this is how we're going to transition you. I never heard none of that. Never heard what they could do for me to help me. I had to do everything on my own, but it's okay. But there is no structure there. There is no plan there. I want to know who audits that place to find out what they're doing there, how to try to make people, you know, get off that transitional. And like I said, it's a flop house basically for me. People go, they do their drugs, they come back, they quick kick back and crash there. Nobody's looking for jobs. It's not being used for people that really, really need it. They want to get off the streets. They want to get help to better themselves. I volunteer at Bethel Church. We do a lot there. We hand out foods. Any day of the week, you can come out there. We have showers. We help homeless people with boxed food. I know some people are still homeless. You know, a lot of them don't want it. I mean, heck, when Mason had the, the fire department had the warming center, I went there early thinking, oh, man, it's going to be packed. I got there, there was 10 people there. Six of them left after they had their dinner. Nobody wanted to keep warm. I was like, really? You'd like to be out in the streets? You'd like me to be freezing? It's a sad situation. And like I said, right now where they're at, we need that place, because at least they're put summers. I have a little niece, and I take her out to walks. You don't want to see what they're doing to the parks. They're messing those parks up. There's drugs. There's broken bottles. There's everything out there. Yeah, it's not the ideal situation. I know they're, I know Claudia will tell you, heck, in the park, people parks, they're messing it up. And that's right, they are. These people shouldn't have to be worried. There should be some kind of more structured enforcement out there. I mean, if these are my family, my grandparents, I'd probably be Charles Bronson in Death Wish out there with the bat waiting for them to jump over. And I feel bad for them. And you know what? Everybody, we have to do something. And I don't know what it is. But the thing is, and I feel sorry for the people, but there is a place that they're at right now. We take away that, and it's going to just spread out. You take away the fence right now, and they're going to go to their borderlines more quicker. I don't know what you guys can do about it. I know I've talked to a lot of people about this, that everybody has their own ideas. But right now, since I've been going out there, I go out there every Friday, hand out hot meals. It's gotten worse and worse. I don't know, because we don't have a city manager now that's overseeing the stuff like we had before, because that's went down drastically. It looks like a battlefield out there when I go out there. Really bad.
One minute.
Well, basically, that's all I want to say. Like I said, there's going to be every kind of person that's going to come up here and talk about it. But we do need a solution. We don't need a Band-Aid. You know, we need something to really do about it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Hello, my name is Shandra Lewis, and I'm the assistant manager and tenant of the Rancho Las Bannas Mobile Home Park. I will not speak for the Rancho Las Bannas Mobile Home Park tonight. I am going to speak of what I have witnessed, what I endure. I also was the women's leader at Bethel Community Church many years ago. I also know what it is to hand out food to the homeless. They're always very polite when they need a bath, when they want food. But they're not so homeless. They are not so friendly when you're not giving them a handout. They're ruthless. They are ruthless. I will tell you my experiences. When the homeless first started to camp in the back, they were camped in an empty lot that is privately owned when you first come into the Mobile Home Park on the left-hand side. There was a gentleman, tall, thin, black man, and didn't take him long. He had to change his clothes, and so he stripped down in front of me as I was driving in. Our children walk to the bus stop up at the front. We did not have to witness that. I have watched them defecate. I don't need to see that. If I'm in the woods camping, I know how to go to the bathroom without people watching me. They have the facility if they had not destroyed it. The city did give them bathroom facilities, but they destroyed it. I did see that. They were destroyed. The trash bins that you provided was destroyed. I've seen that. I have seen them tap into the water supply, the city's water supply, so that they can have water to swim. And I don't know where they got their little kiddie pools, but they were out there in their kiddie pool. So I see lots of stolen carts. I see needles in our facility, used needles that we never had before. And so this is what I see. This is what I have to protect myself against if I'm walking. And I have seen a gentleman overdose. He came in, and they had to give him Narcan. This is what the homeless brings and gives to us in our park. Yes, they need help, but it is not my responsibility to give them the help that they need. I would be happy to provide that in working at somewhere, but they do not need to be in our park and next to us, because the city has not been able to keep them out of our facility, out of our community. I have had countless, countless, and numerous confrontations with the homeless, stealing, going through the trash cans. This is not my job. This is the police department's job. This is the city's job. If you're going to place them there, then they have to follow the rules of citizens. They don't get a free shot. Okay, thank you. They don't get a free shot at terrorizing me. They don't get a free shot at that. They need to follow the law and be accountable to the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Claudia Nunez, and I am here, along with what you just said about the homeless, and for that lady that talked earlier, I challenge her to take the homeless to her front yard and have them build fires, because they're warming fires, and to find used condoms hung on her fence, to find the needles that they've been finding, to have stuff stolen from her house. If she has kids, to hear some of the homeless telling her, if she has a little boy or a little girl, hi there, little boy, you sure are gorgeous. Why don't you come over here so I can see you better? To me, and I don't know anybody else, but it sounds like a pervert. If it would have been one of my kids, I would have killed that sucker. I don't know how you guys would feel, but that doesn't go very well. Sure, they need help. They are out there by choice. It's their choice. I was a homeless person. I didn't have a husband. I had three kids. I had to support my three kids, but I worked. I could have been out in the street, but I worked. These people don't want to work. These people want everything given to them for free. And that's not fair to us. We all pay our taxes. Why should we have to be afraid every night, or if we leave our home, why should we be afraid to come home? That's not fair to us. You guys are all looking at me like, when are you going to shut up? Guess what? This mouth don't shut up if I know I'm right. If it was one of you guys going through this crap with the homeless, you wouldn't have taken it this long. You would have already done something about it. And I'm begging you, we've already come here time after time after time to ask for help. Nothing is being done. Every night you go out there, they still have their fires going on, even if the temperature's 100 degrees. Come on. Smoke hurts people that can't breathe right. They're talking about their drugs. They're talking about all this other crap. You guys need to do something. And also, I wanted to address the newspaper. To me and to other people that I have talked to, the newspaper now is very biased. They have not mentioned one word about what we from the Mobile Home Park have been fighting for. Why not? Because we don't have money? Because we're not kissing their ass? Well, guess what? We need help. And if it helps us for them to put it in the newspaper, put it in.
Hi, my name is Kalid Sanchez. I'm a local resident and business owner of Virex Boutique and Makeup. I'm here in support of the toy drive that the Sandoval family is doing. Personally, I have three small kids. Every single Christmas, I could just see their smiles. They look forward the entire year for Christmas. And I cannot imagine a kid who looks forward to Christmas and have nothing. And that touches my heart. What they're doing, it's a really nice cause. It's something that the community needs, because it's for our local kids. It's for a kid that we probably know, a kid that goes to our schools, a kid that probably walks home in front of your street. So I call the community. I'm making a call to support their cause. Personally, I'm going to support. That's why I'm here. But they need more help. They need everyone's help that were more fortunate. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, and chief. My name is Nancy Klein, and I have a prepared statement tonight that I will hand to each of you when I'm finished. Tonight's my third attempt at attending the city council meeting to continue this discussion regarding the Las Bannos Animal Shelter. I want to give you some context, a little bit of some of the things I'm going to be touching on. Prior to my participation, three to five dogs per week were being euthanized. That is straight from Officer Martin's mouth. That had happened to the year prior. Three to five dogs per week. The reason given was that no one wanted them. The fact is, no one knew about them. I've been providing rescue services for the last 14 months to the shelter. Three hours and 103 miles driven twice a week round trip to evaluate dogs, which equates to about $6,500 just in fuel cost over 14 months. 40 to 60 hours per week I've dedicated to reaching the shelter, evaluating dogs, the creation of media, rescue coordination, animal pickup and transport. And if we were to put a dollar figure around that at a meager $25 an hour, over a year, that's about $52,000. I don't say this for accolades. I just say it for context. Approximately 250 dogs and several dozens of cats I have placed into 501(c)(3) nonprofits that have otherwise would have been killed for lack of knowledge. My dedication is clear. My impact is measurable, and the need is justifiable. I do want to make note that this week, 8:15, ACO Martin is out on vacation. ACO Estrada had a meeting, jury duty, and has called out sick the rest of the week. There is now nobody at the shelter until Monday. That means no access for the public, for myself, to help rescue the animals. And I'm sure we have the police going in just to feed them. That being said, the staffing at the shelter is inconsistent, and it's also insufficient. Two AC are busy with field calls, reporting, cleaning, feeding, and doing owner reclaims. My recommendations to the council, to the mayor, and to the chief is that you need to hire at minimum a programs coordinator full-time, someone who is going to take care of your rescue, grants for supported funding for the shelter, community outreach, and education. I also suggest a part-time kennel assistant, one who will feed, clean the shelter, and support staff in a variety of ways. I've talked before about the hours of operation and how it does not meet the community's needs. Someone on another topic here had talked about commuters. It's no different. Previously, I've had made recommendations that the shelter hours should shift from Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. that the shelter hours should shift from Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, to Tuesday through Saturday. Again, a Saturday for our community. Further, making those hours for the public 12 to 5 on the weekdays and 12 to 4 on Saturday. Those early morning hours closed to the public can be utilized by staff to take care of the animals, take care of paperwork uninterrupted. I look forward to hearing the report on the shelter building update tonight, chief. So thank you for adding that and council to the agenda. I still want to underscore the fact that the city website for the shelter is still outdated back from 2018. So if you haven't looked at it, thank you. If you haven't perused the shelter information on the website under the police department, I encourage you. Again, outdated since 2018. Facebook has not been utilized efficiently. Case in point, cat intake hold that happened a week ago was not announced on the shelter page, just on the PD Facebook page. The shelter was inundated with concern because people didn't understand why they couldn't take cats. Lastly, we do have spay neuter vouchers available as of July 1st. They have not been advertised or promoted in the community. And finally, last meeting, I gave you all a spreadsheet. You probably had no idea what that was. That reflected through fiscal year the animals that I have rescued and saved out of your shelter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm Anna McCauley, local resident. We know we'll have a new mayor with the new next election and possibly a new council member too. While it's helpful that we heard from House headhunter agencies this afternoon about their process and methodology, I don't think it's useful for the present council to determine who's selected for the next city manager position. The firing of Josh Panero is just raw in this community. I'm not for one side or the other. But when I heard that he was forbidden from seeing city employees from one of the city managers, that tells you a lot about what's going on. City managers may not be liked by their employees, but they gotta keep a job so their heads are down. But they should never be permitted, forbidden from seeing the city CEO and finding out what their aspirations are, their career goals and so on. I recommend that we hold off on this selection of the city manager until the election results are known. I listened to the special council meeting on Zoom this afternoon. Mr. Rojas, with the first agency interviewed, provided a suggestion. He had heard my comments earlier about the next council making the city manager selection. He had a suggestion. One of the cities was going to be getting, I believe the mayor had passed away, but they had an election, they have a new mayor, and they had several new council members. And so they were included after the election results were known. They weren't yet seated, but they were included in making the next selection for that city employee, I believe it was a city manager. But nevertheless, they were not excluded. I think this is a very good solution for that city involved, and we should be inclusive of that suggestion going forward. There was so much dissension this afternoon with the deadlock two-to-two decision on making a decision about what agency. Mayor Feria wasn't there, so it's moved to a date when all five can be on hand. But I think unless the new council is a part of that next city manager position selection, I don't think we should leave it to this council to be the sole deciders. The dissension at the end of this hearing this afternoon was so thick you could cut it with a knife. I'm not siding with one or another. One side or another, we just make a decision that's fair to the next council. Let them be part of it. We're looking to fill this position. And I think waiting until the election results are in so we know who the new manager, mayor is and if there's a new council member. But I don't think we should exclude them. Ethics and integrity make all the difference going forward. And that means the people on this dais as well as allowing those who will be selected in the next council. The last thing we need to do is for this council, for the next council, to have an escape hatch, to blame today's council for whatever the decision is, especially if it ends up not being terribly good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Kurnow. I live at the trailer park. The trailer park. I too was also homeless more than once in my life. I agree 1,000% with the gentleman that was up here earlier. And there's gotta be some kind of way of regulating. If the people want help, give it to them. If they don't, give them an ultimatum of like, you know, if you don't want to help yourself, we're not gonna help you. Adios. You know? If people want to live their lives that way, that's fine. But my main concern, not just the condoms and the rigs and all that stuff. I pick up papers and stuff at the Mobile Home Park. You just would not believe the stuff I found. But that's neither here nor there either. The thing that I'm really scared about is the fires. Unfortunately, one of my neighbors' mobile home caught on fire. And the amber's from his trailer, right? Or, I mean, what it boiled down to is I got an 88-year-old father living in my home. He can't walk. I can barely walk and move myself, but I can get out. I cannot get my dad out of there. And I don't think that there could possibly be enough done to make them quit having open fires. I mean, the mobile homes are not that far apart. And there's a lot of elderly people that live in there that it's hard for them to get around. But what happened, like I, and I also want to thank the police department. They helped take my dad out. And they've shown up and the paramedics and stuff have showed up there many times. Wonderful job. I've seen stuff done in this city that, you know, you don't even hear of happening in great big cities that got mega budgets and stuff, you know? But the main thing is, give them an ultimatum. You know what? If you want to hang out here, you want to stay here, no matter where they move to, no matter where they move to. That's one thing that I think that needs to be done. And they're they're not all bad people. You know, it only takes just a couple of people to screw it up for everybody. But, you know, they need to, they need to relocate them. When they start chopping down bob, when they start chopping down bob wire that are already over fences, and when they start cutting sections of fence, I mean, you know, a lot. I'm talking like more than any 10 feet or so. I'm talking like close to 100 feet at a time and stuff. That's ridiculous, man. That's ridiculous. Do their drugs, find their needles, throw their needles on the fence, you know? That's just really totally stupid.
One minute.
You know, I mean, it's just, besides little kids, what about the people, what about people that have, they don't have nobody, but maybe like a little dog or something? Go run it up. What would happen to one of them dogs or something if they stepped on one of them syringes? You know, it's a mess. But they do need to be moved and they do need an ultimatum. You know, no matter where they're moved to. Because otherwise, it's just a big waste of time. Because it's like the other gentleman said, they don't want to change. They're there. You know what I mean? They get free water, they get this, they get water.
15 seconds.
And that's it, man. I mean, I'm done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard, a resident of Los Banos. I think we should have ended with the chamber and Mr. Sandoval. It would have been more upbeat. I have been coming to council meetings for years. I've been through four mayors, various council members. Some work together, some didn't. Some have been led around, some lead. Now we have a council that is so divided, it's painful. How much time and money did we waste in asking a question about our insurance for one employee that has no business input in regards to it? To me, that was a waste of money and embarrassing. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, how much money did we waste by not using the consultant that we first hired to get a city manager and going completely off the grid with who we got so that there was no guarantee and it was money wasted? Now we're spinning our wheels to pick somebody, to find another city manager, where he said he would include them, let them look at anything, any ones that they have picked to add to, to subtract to, when that new mayor or that new council member comes in. But it's a starting point. But we couldn't even get our act together to decide on that. We held off because somebody wanted to have Tom involved. Yeah, just said, Tom's not gonna be your mayor. So why am I waiting for one person to make that decision? And wait? It doesn't make sense. How much time and money does it cost for us to spin our wheels because somebody or all of you have a different agenda and maybe it's not in the best interest of the city? So I just, I need you guys to get your act together and work together, not be on their own and leading people around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and council. My name is Mike Hughes. I'm the commander of the VFW here in Los Banos. So I want to end on a better note, okay? On November 5th, we're gonna have our veterans parade. So we want to get everybody involved. We want you to mark that date down now so that you remember it. November 5th is the veterans parade. We have a place in the parade for all the council to be. We want you in our parade. We want everybody in the community to come to the parade because it's to honor our veterans who have made this country what it is today. So that's the positive thing. The other thing that's positive is the first and third Thursday of every month, we have at the VFW hall, I mean, the veterans hall, because we call ourselves the Los Banos Veterans. At the veterans hall, we have the veteran service office. Somebody from their office comes over. We have the ability to help veterans get their claims, get, find out what they have coming to them and get it for them. So we're there, we'll be there tomorrow from about 8:30 in the morning. The veterans people come from Merced about 9:00. We've got some really, really good people that come. They help our vets. We've helped a lot of veterans. We also have the Atlas, some of you are familiar with it. We have the Atlas Pod Program where we have veterans come and they can see their doctors, their clinicians. They can see their dietitian. I'm gonna see that one next. See the dietitian, see the people, help them with that. They can get their blood pressure checked. They don't have to drive to Merced, they don't have to drive to Fresno anymore. We have that available for them five days a week, anytime that they set up the appointment with the people in Fresno, people in Merced, the doctors. So we've tried to make it easier for our vets and even our homeless vets to be able to get services that they need. So we hope all of you will be there for our veterans parade on November 5th. We hope it to be a good parade. We haven't had one in two years because of the pandemic, because of a lot of things. But we're gonna have it this year. We are gonna have the parade. We're gonna have the most patriotic entry from the schools are gonna be involved again so the flags can go around. And we hope to be able to come to you after the veterans parade and present those here at the council chambers on the council meeting following the veterans parade. So you guys have to figure out what you're doing, but the vets are gonna have their parade. So that's a positive thing for Los Banos.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anybody from the public left would like to speak? Would you like to come down here to the podium?
Good evening. My English not very well, but I'm trying. Me puedo traducir? Mi nombre es Ramon Gomez.
My name is Ramon Gomez. I'm here today
a exponer mi caso que vivo vivo en la ciudad aquí de los baños sobre la calle Pino Noir. El quise mover mi fans de mi casa.
I tried to move my fans from my house.
Mi fans está retirada de la banqueta. Mi fans tiene 15 pies y medio.
15 feet away from the street?
El hace la semana pasada la traté de mover.
Last week I tried to move it.
Iba a comprar el material que se ocupaba.
Have I owed the material?
Alguien hizo el reporte y fue la ciudad, el policía a decirme que probablemente no estaba bien, que me aconsejara que lo parara porque ya iba a la mitad del trabajo.
Somebody put the report to the police department and court enforcement show up to tell them to stop what he's doing?
Está bien, yo lo hice para atrás, moví el fans de nuevo para atrás.
He removed her fence back, what it used to be.
Que está ahí. Estoy de acuerdo con eso, pero hay muchas casas que yo veo que están en la misma situación.
It's a lot of houses that are in the same situation.
Y el fans está, algunos tienen, no tienen ni un pie de la banqueta hacia el fans. Otros tienen dos pies de lejos, otros tienen tres pies.
So what I see most of the houses is have it one feet away from the sidewalk. You have it two feet away from the sidewalk. Sometimes three feet away from the sidewalk.
Yo siempre le digo en mi casa, ¿por qué no? ¿Qué es lo que tengo que hacer yo para que mi casa, para que yo pueda usar mi terreno que estoy pagando por un terreno que aproximadamente son 1,085 pies cuadrados, lo que tiene?
You want to know how I can, who I need to talk or who you need to know, how I can help her to get it done?
Because it's 1,085 square feet. So then my property, so algo que estoy pagando, property taxes. Yo sé todo, everyone pays property taxes here, but everyone use the field, everyone use the house, everyone use the everything there. But I pay for that, but I don't use my whole lot.
You use your whole property.
Yeah. So, y lo quiero usar yo ese terreno, esos 1,085 pies cuadrados, yo los quiero usar para poner árboles.
You want to use the whole property to put the trees in there?
Poner árboles. Yo soy, cuido mucho el agua. Pueden checar los miles de mi agua. Yo y mi familia nos concentramos mucho en cuidar el agua, pero también queremos tener un espacio verde. Creo que es lo que necesitan. pero también queremos tener un espacio verde. Creo que es lo que estamos también en la ciudad.
He's very concerned by the water, but he wants to have a green spot in her house.
Y quisiera ver si ustedes me pudieran ayudar de la manera más atenta y amable.
She wants to know if you guys can help him with, you know, with all respect and everything. You guys can help him with her problem.
Porque yo no soy de las personas que voy a hacer un reporte porque otras personas tengan su fence más grande, no lo voy a hacer.
I'm not the kind of person that's going to go and put a report because the other people is different.
Yeah, so yo lo que quiero hacer es hacer las cosas bien, hacer las cosas con el permiso de ustedes y les agradezco su tiempo.
And I want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Anyone else in the public would like to speak? If no one else in the public, I'll ask Ms. Maloney if anyone.
Hi, Ms. Maloney. Could you please read this email during this council meeting tomorrow night? Thanks so very much. Dear City Council Members, My name is Casey Miller and I am the park operator for the Rancho Los Banas Mobile Home Park. My last email to the council was a little less than a month ago on July 19th, where I explained in detail about the continual problems with the homeless encampment behind our park. Here are some updates to clearly show you that nothing has changed and the homeless are still wrecking havoc in our park. On July 21st, 2022, the homeless cut two parts of our fence so that they could easily trespass in our park. They also stole several privacy slats. Also, on July 21st, we had a trespasser in the park. On a skateboard and a lawnmower was stolen from one of our tenant's spaces. On July 22nd, a tenant had several package deliveries stolen. Another tenant had a power washer stolen. On July 23rd, the drummer boy was back and we received several tenant complaints in the excessive noise. On July 24th, a tenant provided us several videos from his Ring camera. They showed the homeless creeping around the spaces looking for things to steal. They showed a homeless man stealing a bike and another stealing a lawnmower. Another tried to break into a car. On August 1st, another lawnmower was stolen. On August 4th, another fire. On August 8th, another fire. This time it was quite large. As I've previously communicated to the council, it will only be, it will be only a matter of time before these fire embers travel over to the home in our park, especially since the colder months are just around the corner. You are placing our entire mobile home community in harm's way by allowing this camp to stay where they are. Several tenants have complained about the excessive rodent problem in the camp. Those rodents are now coming into our park as our cockroaches. This camp has created massive environmental problems, not only from the rodents, but also from the human excrement, the fires that burn toxic materials and the excessive drug paraphernalia. We have been begging the city to take care of this unacceptable problem for over two years now. Don't you think we have endured enough? Why hasn't the city helped us? These people need to be moved from this encampment so our tenants and your taxpaying citizens can be safe. As I've stated to you in my previous emails, we are holding the city accountable for any and all problems arising from the homeless encampment on the city's property. Should our tenants start filing claims with the city for all of the stolen property? Please let us know your carrier information so we may pass that on to our numerous tenants who have had belongings stolen over the past two years. Enough is enough. The city needs to do right by our residents and move this camp elsewhere. We've attended countless council meetings. We've documented information until we're blue in the face. We've met with officials. We've put up with the unthinkable. Our tenants are frustrated and scared. Our tenants work hard to get what they have, only to lose it to theft from the homeless. I honestly can't believe that I'm still having to beg you to do the right thing here. Part of the city council's job is to protect the public. Please protect the residents of the Rancho Los Banas Mobile Home Park. We need to be able to live in peace instead of fear and frustration. Thank you. Signed, Casey Miller. And those are the only comments I received.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. All right, since there's no more emails, we'll close the public forum and move to the next item. Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by the city council member. I will then now ask the city clerk to read the consent agenda.
Check warrants numbers 234251 through 234509 in the amount of $842,101.03. Minutes for the July 20th, 2022 city council meeting. Minutes for the August 3rd, 2022 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6535. Reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of legislative bodies of the City of Los Banas pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6536. Authorizing the interim city manager of Los Banas to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the City of Los Banas and the Los Banas Unified School District as it pertains to emergency medical services for district-sponsored events. City Council Resolution Number 6537. Authorizing the interim city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Goveya Engineering, Inc. for on-call airport engineering services. City Council Resolution Number 6538. Authorizing the interim city manager to execute a professional services agreement and the Public Works Director/City Engineer to administer with Odell Engineering, OK, Inc. and Calendar Associates Landscape Architect, Inc. for on-call landscape architecture, landscape plan check, and landscape inspection services. City Council Resolution Number 6539. Authorizing the interim city manager to execute a Measure V local funding agreement with Merced County Association of Governments for the administration of the local projects funding from Measure V. City Council Resolution Number 6540. Amending the City Council Resolution Number 5248 relating to the city's conflict of interest code. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. I will now go through council and see if there's any items that would like to be pulled for discussion or separate vote. Ms. Lewis, anything? Would you, anything? All right then, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Lamas?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'll second that.
I got a motion from Councilmember Jones and a second from Alamas. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no. Motion carried. We'll move to our next agenda item. Agenda number eight. This is Traffic Calming Measures, Speed Cushion Policy and Procedure Report. And we'll turn to Public Works Director/Engineer Finn.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the publics. This is kind of an exciting topic for me, being an engineer, and this is related directly to traffic and transportation. It's kind of a fruit of our labor, so to speak, because a lot of our departments, from fire, police, community development, as well as part of the councils, actually, you know, meet together to actually help develop and revise this policy. So with that, I think we have a presentations round. Thank you, City Manager Roman, for distributing that. But just a little background, back in October 2020, city council has made a request for staff to review our current traffic calming and specifically the speed cushion policy and procedure. This request was mainly to look into the criteria and selection threshold for various street classifications, specifically the collector and arterial streets. As of November 2021, city council authorized staff to bring onboard a professional traffic engineering services consultant by the name of Hexagon Transportation Consulting, Inc. to help us in reviewing this policy, our current policy, as well as the general practices from various cities. In this case, we look into 12 different cities within our area. The result of this report were presented back in January of 2022 of this year. As a result of this report, council have requested to form an ad-hoc committee with the councilmember Lewis and councilmember Lambert to assist staff with various departments to look into this policy and revise it accordingly. Following up with that, we have met at two different occasions, one in January and one in March of this year to review the policy. And we discussed in length of the various topics here, one of which is the speed cushion flow charts and timeline for the current policy, as well as the minimum eligible criterias. You know, this include the roadway classification itself, the approval percentage for the resident in term of the petitions, how we look at traffic data, specifically the traffic speed that's recorded out there, as well as the prevailing wage and the qualification thresholds, and also a new criteria potentially, that is the traffic collision criteria. And lastly, it's also have a consistent standard and policy when it comes to installing these such as signage and striping in accordance with the state standard. So as a result, here's are the proposed revisions that we have put our brain together and bringing it up to council. The first one is the flow charts. As you can see from the presentations, I put two slides here. One is the current flow charts, the one with the circles on the left. And on the right is the revised flow charts. The existing flow chart provide a summaries of our current procedures from when we accepted the applications to when Traffic Safety Committee would review and approve on the requests. This current flow chart actually does not have a time bound. It's not have set expectation for a resident to know when each step would take. So staff have reviewed this and looking at our current staffing level and capacity and have determined that the graph on the right would have the most realistic timeline in reviewing and approving these requests. The next proposed revision is roadway classifications. Our current policies only allow traffic, speed cushion or traffic calming measures to be deployed on residential street only. After review, looking at all the various agency, I think total 12 of other agency, it is common to see that traffic calming can also be deployed on Collector Street. However, because of the way that the roadways are functioning, staff currently do not recommend putting traffic calming on arterials. And mainly, these are mainly depend on the classification itself, the hierarchy of road, and mainly because roadway are being designed for two main purposes. One is access and the other one is mobility. As you can see, mobility are more like for higher volume, higher speeds, such as expressway, such as highway, and so on, so forth. Versus access, that's more of like your local residential streets that provide direct access to residential home and stuff. Both of those has very different functionality. Ones, again, is for volumes, for carrying large volume, as well as a higher speed, for more efficient moving of peoples and goods. Versus access is to provide more access to the residents within the area. So that's why staff is recommending only to deploy or expand these criterias only to Collector Streets and leave those arterial system to better functions and efficiently moving peoples and goods across our city. And again, this is consistent with the ITE, which is the Institute of Traffic Engineering, as well as NACTO, which is the National Associations of City Transportations, in recommending this. I have included our city functional classification map. This is the same one as we have adopted as part of our general plan so that everyone will be familiar with which street is classified as which classifications. The next criteria is speed threshold. As mentioned before, our current criteria is only allowed to be deployed on local or residential streets, which restrict the speed limits to only be 25 miles per hour. So as we expand this criteria to be able to accommodate more road as we go into Collector, staff is recommending to expanding that or bumping that up to 30 mile per hour. All of the device that we look at, all the speed cushions that we've been purchasing can accommodate up to those 30 mile per hour range and can be installed, you know, in conjunction with stripings and signage to be safely deployed in these road conditions. The next one is the approval percentage. Since I've been here in the last six months, that is one of the thing that I've been hearing a lot from our residents is that sometime it can be difficult in getting the petitions from our residents. You know, sometime the tenants or the homeowner might not be at home and they're having a hard time reaching these current 70% threshold. So looking at all the various other city, it is common to see that, you know, some city have put it down to 50% threshold for the petition. Some city has kept it at 70%. So in this case, staff is recommending 60% so that way we still get a general consensus and majority from the resident within the neighborhood that speeding exists and that the resident within that community want the cities to address the speeding and the volume concerns presented in the request. The next one is kind of a little bit more complicated. However, it is, every jurisdictions that has traffic calming policy have this criteria and threshold. So currently in our criteria, that is criterias 2F and 2G, we have required that in order for roads to be qualified for traffic calming or for speed cushion is that 15% of the vehicle traveling those road has to exceed the posted speed limit. And that out of all, and then 10% of all the vehicle traveling that road must exceed the posted speed limit by at least 10 miles per hour. So in many cases, a lot of the requests that we've been receiving actually are not meeting the second criteria, the 10% of 10 mile over the posted speed. So with that, we have looked into the state as well as kind of the general guidance from the ITE. And it was proposed to use the prevailing speed. The prevailing speed is what we use to set speed limits and it's widely used and acceptable throughout the traffic engineering community. And essentially what that is, is an 85% top speed that you guys will probably hear from various laws such as AB 47 in setting speed limit. So staff is recommending to replace the existing criteria, 2F and 2G, with the 80 percentile speeds of 7 miles per hour over the speed limit. This is a very common, widely used criterias from all the city that we looked into. Okay? The next changes that is new to this revision is collision data. In the previous policy, collision data was not a criterias. We did allow for room for staff to have discretionaries over this criteria. However, we want to be more objective when reviewing all of these streets and have the criterias upfront for all our residents to see. And it's very common, I mean, this is the same criteria that the state use also for setting speed limits is that in order for a street segment to be qualified, those street have to show a minimum of five accidents within the last three years. And that's not just any accident. It has to be preventable, accident that is preventable with the deployment of these traffic calming device. And that mainly because we want to distinguish between the type of collisions that happen out there. Sometime we would get a collision that caused by, you know, DUI, distracted driving and stuff. Those kind of accidents are not preventable using this device. The ones that the accident that we want to prevent are those that caused by intentional speedings or high volumes that is not meant to be traveling in that street segment. And of course, lastly, is to have a consistent standard for ourselves, also for our developers. Currently, the California MUTCDs does have a standard for stripings and signage. Currently, we do not have this standard in place and staff is recommend for council to adopt this standard so we can deploy this and all of our speed cushions to allow for advanced warnings, striping, as well as advanced warning signage for the drivers that use those street. Okay? So with that, this is our current inventories of where we have deployed these speed cushions. There are 10 locations that we have installed so far. This is dated back to 2017, five of which we have deployed it ourselves. That is, our city staff purchased the materials and installed them. And then the other five is following our general plans, conditions, and our standards, putting those thing ahead of time with our developments, improvement plan as they come in. So with that, this is what I want to bring up to your attention too is that currently we have an adopted budget of $20,000 out of our street funds or the Fund 100, which is a kind of a general fund that being used to deploy these things. We have $20,000 for fiscal year '23 and I kind of want to put into perspective of how much that can get us. So as you can see, you know, as we move on to a bigger road like Collector Street, the cost to install these measures goes up, as you see. But so with $20,000, we can probably accommodate two to three of these speed cushion requests per year. But also, what I want to bring up also is that the operation costs to maintain these speed cushions. As you are aware, there are striping and signage requirement. Those striping that we put out typically because of all the vehicle braking and stuff on them. Those have a very short lifespans. A lot of these stripings wear out within two or three years. So we would have to go and replace those. Secondly, the device that we are using out there are recycled rubbers. They have a typical lifespan of about seven to 10 years. So. So after those, we would have to factor in the cost to replace them because eventually they would start to warp and whatnot, especially in extreme heat that we see here in Los Banoos itself. So as we continue to add these more onto the street, we need to then be mindful of including the associated budgets to operate and replace them as they age. Okay? So with that, staff would like to recommend for city council to receive the report and adopt a resolution approving the revised policy and procedure for this policy. That's conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Thanh. I will now go through council and see if they have any questions. We'll go with you, Mr. Lamas first.
Thank you, Mr. Rupert. Thank you, Director. Very good, comprehensive report. I appreciate that. It's been long anticipated, but thank you for the work on it. I've got a couple of questions. Is there any room for flexibility on the threshold that you've described? Say, for example, if we have 80% of the residents who would like that, again, because there's some expectations, and it's not just by petition, right? There has to be some other qualification or criteria. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Is there any way to say, well, look, there's such a demand here that we could bypass that because of the demand of the folks that are experiencing that, even though they may not have reached that 10% criterion? Say they're at 9%, but they're just not there. Is there anything, any way to have some flexibility for the residents who are experiencing on these speed issues?
So one thing is we wanted to make sure we address the problem properly, and typically these petitions is giving us a sense of confidence that there is a perceived speeding problem in that neighborhood. It is general consensus that there is speeding problem there because it does take staff time and resources to go in and collect those data. We are actually in the process of purchasing, purchasing a new device to assist us with that. But generally, that's kind of the general practice is to start with those consensus. But from our, one of the comment that we get from our ad hoc committee is to find way on a case by case basis to assist the neighborhood facilitator in reaching people to get those consensus. I know there have been some difficulty sometime when you go into peoples and knocking their door and whatnot, you can't go to hold them, or you might not get, you know, the telephone number or the address of your neighbor or in that street segment to be able to get a hold of them. Now, we made a commitments, you know, from staff level to help and work with those facilitators to make sure they get a whole, get a, the contact information to those tenant to be able to reach them. And that's why we still see it as a pertinent or requirement step in getting those consensus. Because ultimately, when we install those device on the street, they are pretty permanent. They are installed there. They will be affecting those living out there. So we want to make sure that we at least at minimum have a general consensus and majority from the neighborhood to get them installed. And the really one other thing that we kind of all worry about also, as we install these device, we also have to look at the impact of the adjacent street also, because sometime when you install, you know, speed cushions or other traffic calming devices would cause something called a cut through neighborhood, right? It will have the traffic diverted to the adjacent street. It's basically the path of least resistance. So that's why we want to make sure that as we are going forward and in approving, is we get a general consensus. The last things that we want to address is making sure that after we install it, not one single resident can come back to council or the Traffic Safety Committee requesting for those device to get removed. So that's why we have an appeal process as well as in a period on normalization process for device to be out there to get, to have its effect on the normal traffic pattern before anyone can come out there and actually request for device to be removed.
Very good. Thank you for that. Yes, boss, appreciate it. And if you could, just for general public's edification, in layman's terms, can you describe arterial and collector?
Yeah. So road classification is essentially is a hierarchy base that us typically and that the planning community or transportation engineering assigns to different roads. It's how the roads are being used. So essentially, what we like to do, because road classification tie directly to funding. Some funding can only be allocated to residential street. Some funding can only be allocated to local, to collector and arterial because essential functions of collector and arterial is to collect all the traffic from the local road in a wider, a bigger geometry that can accommodate the higher volume, also a higher speed to then dump those volume into a bigger classification such as, you know, Highway 152 or an expressway. So that's why we design or have to have those hierarchy in place, so that way when we go into the basis of design, it's, you know, when we repave the road, reconfigure the lane striping and stuff like that, we take into account those kind of usage.
So arterial is basically a neighborhood street?
Arterial street are not neighborhood street. They are kind of the bigger street right just underneath a highway. It's carry typically 3,000, somewhere between 3,000 to 27,000 vehicle per day.
And Collector Street is what?
Collector Street is just underneath the arterial, so Collector carry the traffic from local residential street and then put that into an arterial street. Yeah. And it has a little bit lower volume. Typically, you would see from 1,000 vehicle per day to somewhere between 6,000 vehicle per day.
I think there's a great first start. We'll see how it works out. There's always kinks that we need to address, but I think, again, thank you for the work. Thank you, the council members, fellow council members for your work on that. It's long awaited. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamas. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Director Thai, I want to thank you for the report. I had some questions earlier that I spoke to you about, and one was the cost of doing these projects individually. The council has allocated 20,000 per year to operate and do this. And just at a general cost, if we had one collector and one residential street, that's about 16,100, which leaves less than, you know, 5,000 to do anything with. So originally, you know, early on in this process, and I can't remember, it was before you got here, I had suggested that monies be allocated in quadrants based on the districts that we have in the city of Los Banoos. And right now, the two districts that have benefited from this, as far as city money is concerned, are District Four and District One. So that means that any one district, if, let's say District One or Two, Three, Four, whatever, uses the money within a year, no other district request can, will have any money to be able to facilitate putting down calming devices. So I know we haven't had an issue or problem at this point. I probably would assume that as time goes on, there'll be more requests and therefore the $20 will be eaten up and some other district residents may not be able to access this for a year or two. So what I would like to request is a year from now, August the 16th, 2023, that this be put on the agenda and brought back to council for review so that you can let us know whether or not it's working the way we have it now, or if we need to consider putting money within district pots so that each district has a certain amount of money to spend on these calming devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. No one else with any questions? The City Council Resolution Number 6541, approving and adopting the revised traffic calming measures, speed cushion policy and procedures, will entertain a motion. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6541 as read by title.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Lewis and a second from Councilmember Lamas to approve the City Council Resolution 6541. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion, pass. We'll move to our next item, item number nine, is appoint a member to the following committee. This is going to be for Measure H, Citizens Oversight Committee. There were three vacancies, one on expired term, expire in December 31st, 2023. And this is going to be for Rita Erickson. And she's not here. Okay, so we just need to make a motion. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protim, I'd like to make a motion to nominate or to approve Rita Erickson to the Measure H Committee.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Lamas?
Yes, Mayor Protim, I'll second that.
Got a motion from Councilmember Jones, a second from Lamas. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? She has been approved. We'll move to number, item 10, Councilmember Request, Discussion Regarding the Continued Operation Closure of the Rail Trail Encampment. This was brought forth by Councilmember Jones. And we turn to Chief Breezy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protim, council members. In conjunction with this item tonight, I provided a very brief overview of this issue Sorry about that, I forgot to get the clicker. So as a bit of background on the rail trail encampment, if you're aware, the funding for this project was approved back in January of 2022, and over a period of the next couple months, we began the planning, implementation and construction phase, and it opened to the public in March of 2022. It's a collaborative effort amongst several agencies, including the County of Merced, the city, Bethel Community Church, New Direction, the Salvation Army, the Community Action Agency, and the Merced County Rescue Mission. The picture below there is a depiction of a satellite photo from Google Earth or one of the other organizations that we commonly get our satellite photos from. The yellow line is the demarcation of the city property line, and the red line within that, that red rectangle is where we erected the fence structure. Goal, the part of the goal of constructing this structure was to try and remove the individuals from getting adjacent to or right up against that fence that you see actually in the satellite photo between the folks to the north at 2151 and this piece of property. Since we're on this photo, to the east or to the right is the Gilbert Gonzalez apartment complex. To the bottom of that property is the rail trail or to the south. And then to the west, to the left side, that other vacant piece of property, it's divided by about a 10-foot tall cinder block wall, is a piece of private property. Some of the pros and cons that we've experienced with this particular encampment, pros are it's a known centralized location for those experiencing homelessness, it's a place for them to go, make know they can get services while they're there. It enhances our outreach efforts. We have the ability to go out in one group with a number of individuals, whether it's our team or someone else's team, and we can make contact with a number of our residents, our homeless residents at one time. And the third one there is it facilitates an efficient transition to housing resources. And what I mean by that example is we've experienced it in a couple of different ways. Scenario one is an opening becomes available at Project Room Key or one of the bridging homes, and they take their staff, they get in the van, they drive out to the camp, or they go out to look for the next person that's in line to use their services. What we have found is that when they've been able to go to the camp and then find the individual there, they know they're there, they've been stable there for some number of days, weeks, months, and they're able to take that person off the streets and get them into their housing project, whatever that program might be. The other alternative is if they're not there, they go searching around our community trying to find them. Oftentimes, it could take hours, it could take days, it could take moving on to the next person because they don't find the next person that is on the list. Those are just some of the big pros in regards to having this camp where it is now. Some of the cons are it is very staff and resource intensive. Our city code enforcement, your city code enforcement team spends a lot of time and resources out there, managing the site, cleaning up the site, trying to take care of problems, being preventative as it relates to problems, trying to forecast out what could be problematic and, and address some of those issues. One of the other cons is that it does have a definite tendency to increase the number of criminal and nuisance type behaviors, the impact surrounding, in the surrounding residents. You've heard about them for months now. We see them, we respond out to calls. It affects the adjacent property just to the west. They walk through that property, they vandalize that property owner's property often with graffiti, trash, debris. We actually met with the owner of that property to the west just a few days ago, and they're very frustrated, they want to be cooperative with us. We asked them some things that we'd like to get them, that we'd like them to accomplish, but they're frustrated because they keep putting money into this, whether it's repairing, replacing the cyclone fence, and the homeless individuals in the area damage it, destroy it, vandalize their property. So those are cons. The other complaint, and you've, you've heard both sides of the issue tonight very clearly, the other complaint is allegations of increased health hazards, rodents, bugs, syringes, condoms, all of those types of things. I've seen videos lately from the residents at 2151 East Pacheco of individuals walking in the middle of their complex at night, in the middle of the night, walking away with a lawnmower. They've, they've provided us with that information. Moving forward, there, we did a homeless count yesterday out there at the camp. There are currently 15 individuals at the camp. Obviously, I have a couple of choices and decisions to make tonight. If you leave it open, staff will continue to work with the surrounding neighborhoods, work with the residents there to continue to minimize and find ways to reduce the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. We'll also continue to pursue other opportunities to find housing. We've been doing that all along. Longer term housing is one of our background goals. Stacy, myself, the city manager, we're sitting meetings trying to find money in pots of, the pockets of the state, the county, anywhere we can to find a longer term solution to this problem. It's complicated, right? It's a very complicated issue that we try and deal with very effectively every day. If we, if the decision is made to close the camp tonight, take about two to three weeks to accomplish that, I don't think we're going to have any problems with that. Unfortunately, there's no immediate relocation site identified. The question has been asked, and I'm happy to answer it, but the question's asked is, can we reproduce this somewhere else? My answer to that is that with the current staffing, the current management plan that we have, it is very difficult to have a successful camp in another location. One of the, one of the locations that we discussed was closer to the water tank, speaking with the residents of the park at 2151. I think there's, I think you get a mixed bag generally leading, leaning towards, it's too close to their existing facility to move it there. So, which brings me to the second part of this, which is staff would like direction, official direction to move towards the longer term strategy. Staff would like direction from the council to start to search out and research those best practice programs and report our findings back to council at a later date. Everything that we've done so far, and we've done a good job of it, we should, I'm very proud of the fact that we have two bridging homes in our community. We have right now 50 beds available, approximately 50 beds available for our community homeless individuals, and those have all come about in the recent years because of all the hard work that we have accomplished at the staff level, the council level, to make those things happen. These strategies cost money, there's state pockets, state funding available that we can get our hands on. It's very resource intensive itself. There's a, man, I wish they, the state would come down and the governor would go, you know what? You guys are doing a great job where you're at, you have Project Room Key, we're going to give you $2 million, whatever it is, to extend, increase your program because we have the space, we have the program, we have the desire, the energy, the will to get it accomplished. We're going to pay for all these grants, and we've got to have vendors and go through the steps to get this accomplished. So we would like, in the meantime, while we continue to work out this, this issue, direction from council to do that, to find a longer term solution, whatever it might be, tiny homes, rebuilding an apartment complex, something that we haven't thought of yet. We'd like to be able to go out and research those things and bring them back to you. That concludes my presentation. I will turn it back to council for some more dialogue on the issue. I'm available for questions if you have any.
So I'm going to go through council first. Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones?
Yes, Police Chief Breezy. If the encampment was torn down, the likelihood of the occupants in there would still be in that area. Is that correct?
Yeah, there is, there's a reasonable likelihood that they will be somewhere in that area, yes.
The photo that was on the screen that kind of dictated the, or pictated the outline of the encampment. We've seen a lot of homeless encampments, tents, things, in there, right up against the Rancho Mobile Home Park fence. And my question is, is was it not a nuisance then?
Yes.
It was. So by taking down the encampment, doesn't fix the problem?
Well, our goal, if council chooses to close the camp down, our goal is to work as hard as we can to avoid that from happening, absolutely.
If that's the case, why haven't we already started that? That goal?
Restate.
Well, you say if we take down the encampment, work as hard as possible to mitigate that issue, so many words. Why haven't we've already begun that?
Begin the process of taking down the camp?
Not taking down the encampment, just in placing homeless that are unsheltered into shelter dwellings or into dwellings.
Yeah, so that is one of our issues that we're dealing with currently, is that we are at capacity. I just checked in today with Project Room Key and the bridging homes. I hope I'm answering your question. But both of those locations, all three of those locations are full currently, so that we have nowhere else to send them.
So we have a funding issue is one.
Yeah.
Because we don't have any more rooms available, correct?
Yes.
Staffing issue. So, moving this encampment to another area, let's say in front of, it has to be an area that the city owns. And we know that if the encampment is too far out of town, homeless will probably not go there because it's not convenient for them. We know between the First and the Fifth, they get their EBT. And from there, they go spend it. If they're not, they can't access their their shopping locations easily, they're probably not going to be in that encampment area if it's too far out. If we put it out there where the water tower is, in front of the apartments on Ward, I forgot what the name is on it. We're just shifting the problem out there, and we could have a new set of problems coming in every, every two weeks to complain about it. My biggest concern about all that is that if they're too close to a vital utility of the city, could they potentially break into that facility and compromise it to where we have to shut down that well?
Yeah.
So they can't. So we really don't want to put them out there where it could shut down water supply to a good amount of residents. So there is not any alternative locations that council can, or with staff that can come up with a viable location that would lessen the impact to the community. Right?
Yeah, I think each time we look at that, and we've looked at that scenario a few times, at all the vacant land that the city has, I think you run into the same problem elsewhere, using the same model that we have today.
Okay, so it sounds like the biggest thing is, we have to come up, figure out more funding sources so we can have more manpower there to give attention needed, to mitigate the problem. Because no matter where you move this encampment, or if you remove it completely, all you're doing is just moving the problem around town, and you're going to develop new problems. I don't think it's going to lessen the amount of manpower that's needed, even though in here, the pros and cons, say cons, staff's source is intensive. Well, we're going to have a lot more issues, a lot more calls all throughout the town, because we're going to have everywhere there's homeless encampments, there's graffiti. I was out there August 5th at that encampment, and there's graffiti all over that cinder block wall. And everywhere where there's encampment, it's pretty much graffiti, garbage cans wherever they're at. And I'm just thinking about how much money it would cost to maintain that around town. So there, there's no easy answer to this. I sympathize with the people of Rancho Mobile Home Park. There was a lot of people up against your back fence prior to this encampment. And it was a mess then, it's a mess now. There's no easy way about this. So, we have to come up with more funding sources so we can put more manpower to, to try to mitigate it. But there, there's really no alternative. We tear it down, we put it up for a vote. It seemed like the email that you sent out on August 1st regarding the closure of this, it seemed like council might have gotten to you and demanded that it was taken down without bringing it to a vote or discussion. And I'm a little ashamed if council did do that. Because this is something the community needs to know about, because if you vote to take this thing down, and now we have an increased nuisance throughout the rest of the town, I just want the residents to know where to point their fingers at. That's all.
Mr. Lamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Chief, thank you very much again. Excellent presentation. Provides, again, more deeper understanding of what you're dealing with. Unfortunately, as that saying in one of the movies I like, it's a big soup sandwich, and we all have to take a bite. Right? Yes, it is. You know, what's interesting is that this did not come up to council when it opened up. There was no discussion about it. There was discussion about the $20,000 that was asked for, but about the location of it, the location of the encampment, the, what it was going to do, how long it was going to be. Then it was never brought up to council, and I'm glad that now it is being brought up to council so that we can talk about it, so we can understand strategies and understand your limitations and what it's going to take. There is no, Councilmember Jones is corrected. There is no answer, there is no direct, this is going to solve the problem. But I think the citizens of those banios, regardless of where they live, what their socioeconomic background is, who they are, how long they've been in town, they require relief, and that's what they're asking for, is relief. We have here some pros. I think that the pros will continue. Non-centralized location, we move it closer to the that other city property. That still continues to be a pro, because it's a non-centralized location for those experiencing homelessness. It will, it's still accessible, actually be more accessible to city, county, and other private resources that provide services to these folks. It'll be actually more accessible. We have reduced traffic going on to that Lindeman Trail, which is unauthorized. They will have the Ward Road, which is a city paved proper street. Actually, increased ability of first responders to access the site for whatever reason, because we have a road there that is easily navigable. They don't have to worry about the entry points, unlocking the chain link fence or whatever barricade we have there currently. So again, that, that's going to improve if we move it. Again, it's still going to facilitate efficient transition to other resources, so that's still a pro. And it's going to reduce crime, which is what the residents are asking for. It's going to reduce that immediacy of the problem, which is in their front yard. Again, it's going to reduce the impact to the folks that are asking for help. And we can say, we're going to leave it there, we go home to our nice, comfortable homes, we, you know, have our nice $100 dinners, and these folks are going to continue to experience this, this situation that they've been experiencing for far too long. I'm not saying that this is going to resolve everything, but I do think that the folks there are asking, and they deserve relief from what they've been experiencing. We're not experiencing that, they are, and they're doing it on time and time and daily and hourly time. These folks are, some of them are close to being homeless themselves. They're having to expend precious resources to replace common everyday commodities. If my lawnmower gets stolen, I'll go replace one next day off. Okay, no problem. They can't do that. That's a major expense for them. A lot of these folks are single, elderly, some of them are handicapped, as we see. These folks cannot defend themselves. As we have continued aggressive burglaries, crime, these folks are going to be emboldened. And sooner or later, we're going to have a tragedy there, if we don't take some kind of action. Now, I understand, it's not the ideal solution. It will not solve all the problems. But I think that it will give immediate relief to the folks who are asking for it. And again, if they were in our backyard, if we were along the canal over another neighborhood, boy, we'd have a lot of folks filling this room, saying, move it, and move it now. But I think sometimes we think that, well, those folks can deal with it, because it's not in my backyard. Well, you know what? Everybody deserves equal access, everybody deserves equal representation, and they need action, and they're calling for action. I think that we need to provide that action now. And again, it's not closing it, it's just moving it further away so that, again, we still have these pros, and we have again, reduction in the access to this criminal behavior to those folks who are getting limited income, disabled, widowers of veterans, elderly, it's time, it's past time that we take some action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamas. Councilmember Lus?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. There are a couple of things that I heard you say about best practices. And in a lot of cases, from city to city, or government agency to government agency, best practices can apply. But this, this is an unusual situation because to me, and best practices with this situation would depend on the community, the economics of the community, whether or not a city can afford to do what it needs to do. And as we all know, there is no relief from the state of California at this time to help in homelessness. Not, not, not in this valley. Not in this valley. And then, again, there are homeless, and there are homeless. And the gentleman that spoke, who said that he had been homeless at one time, and he spoke about the homeless, like there are those who want to go in, and there are those that don't. And I know that for a fact, because I worked in this field. So, the ones that we have in this encampment, I would assume for the most part, they are ones that don't want to go in. We have Project Home Key, and I think some of the alternative houses. At some point, this city's going to run out of money for Project Home Key. So we won't have funds to even deal with that anymore. We've been fortunate to be able to fund it twice. I don't know how the city's going to be able to continue to fund Project Home Key without assistance in a major part from the state of California. So, those who are chronically mentally ill, the state of California has practically done away with treatment. Merced County never really had much of any kind of treatment at all in regards to the chronically mentally ill, people who need to be conserved and put into institutions to help them get their lives back together, to be medicated. And if they go off their meds, they get put back in the hospital to get them back on their feet again, and society was pretty much protected. But we don't have that anymore in the state of California. And they push the responsibility down to the cities, where in fact, it's the county's responsibility to treat people who are mentally ill. But again, the state has really taken away just about all funding for mental health treatment. So here we are left in a quandary. We're a small city. We're not a major metropolitan, and, and, you know, we all see on the news every day some of these major metropolitans have like mega multiple problems than what we do in regard, in regards to homelessness. But we have a segment of our community who's affected, who is asking, as Councilmember Yamas said, for relief. They want help. That encampment was there once before. The city shut it down because it was unhealthy, and it was a nuisance to the area. And because we own that property, they brought it back. We don't have enough police officers and code enforcement officers to be out there 24/7 a day to control the issues that are out there. And we've got to figure out something. We've been talking about this for a couple of months now. And we haven't made any progress on this. I, and I, I give our staff a lot of credit for doing what they've done at this point. But I think we need to be more proactive in planning for this and coming back with solutions to the council about what you can do without directives from us all the time. So, I don't know that we'll be able to get a directive tonight, because we're probably going to have a split vote on this. And it's really unfortunate because residents who depend on us as council members to help them are not getting any help. And I, and lastly, on my comments, I really take offense, Councilmember Jones, to every time something comes up, you want to accuse us of going to staff or council members, certain council members, going to staff and trying to convince them about something. I've not talked to anybody, I can't speak for Councilmember Yamas, but I know those are, that's directed at us. When I ask for what I need to ask for, I ask for it here on the dais. I haven't called the chief and said, you need to get those people out of there. And it's, it's really, this is the divide here on the council. When people sit up here and make accusations, and they cause the public to believe something that's unfounded and untrue. So, everybody, try to get the facts. Don't just take what one or two people tell you and put in your ear. Because we're not out there trying to cause a ruckus. We're here, we were elected to do our job, and we're trying to do it, but now it's difficult to do the job. I, to our city manager, I think we need to get some relief to these people in this community. Their tax dollars are just as valuable to us as people who live anyplace else. I know we had a situation on the canal where a homeless person was, you know, behind a business. And immediately, our staff removed them. We had one that was by CCID. Immediately, our staff removed them. So how is that business or CCID more important than the people who live in this trailer park and can't help themselves and can't defend themselves? You know, we're either looking at somebody killing somebody one day, or a major lawsuit. I, I think that's, that's my opinion about it. And, and I know this is tough on staff, you guys, I, I give you 1,000% credit. You have, you have done miraculous things to try to solve this. But we're not, we can't, we're not getting the help from the state that we need to get. And certainly, us sitting up here pointing fingers at each other is not getting the job done. And it doesn't help our staff get the job done. It just creates a motivational problem. But we still have an issue that we have to work on and solve, and try to solve it as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mrs. Nobody else? I, you know what? Homeless is a big issue. And I'm going to go down those pros and cons, again, also myself. The location that they are, you know, a suggestion of moving down by the water tower. Some of them may stay down there if you put it down there. The rest of them are going to stay down in their little close area where they're at now, and probably up against the fence again. I, I feel maybe we should start looking, and of course, if we shut down the encampment, that's going to make it even harder for us to get the grant, because we don't have an encampment already in place to work towards still producing or getting the funds to operate with the Room, Operation Room Key. If we shut it down, then it's going to be harder to get the, the grants. I feel what we may need to do is look for money where, maybe instead of trying to help there also, let's see what we can do to help out the residents of the the trailer park. What can we put there? Maybe that's an idea we need to look at. Because if we shut it down, yes, it's going to take a couple of weeks, they're going to go right back to the the chain link fence, and it's going to be worse than what it is. They're going to go throughout the town, but we're going to constantly get the calls, you know, we still have them down the rail trail. So the locate, and I'm not saying that we can fix the problem, but we're going to fight the solutions from here on out, because we don't get from the, the state. We don't get the help from the state. But if we don't, if we shut it down, and if we start looking for grants or help to keep Room Key, our other five homes, they're, they're going to come back, I believe, and going to say, well, you guys had a process going. You know, why should we give you the money if you're going to shut it down again? I feel we need to look for the grant, possibly to help out. Maybe we can do something with the fence, make it a little bit more Maybe we can do something with the fence, make it a little bit more aggressive to where it's not as more of a privacy instead of just the regular chain link fence through I don't see the pros for going down by the water tower because then they're going to be walking right through your place again, still again. They're going to be, whoever doesn't stay down at that location, they're going to be right there behind your back door again, even closer now than where they are. I don't have a solution, but we do, we're definitely welcoming. I would, I just feel if we shut it down, then the solutions that we come up with, we're not going to get the grants that are the monies from the state, you know, that we've been getting in the past. I think we need to be a little bit more stronger and start, keep pushing for these grants to help out. But I just feel it's going to make things worse than what they are actually right now. I still drive out there every week, usually on Monday nights, on my days off, just to try to see what I, if we see something that needs to be redone, I try to get with whoever I can and say, hey, the fence needs to get repaired. You know, I don't like seeing what's going out there. I don't see everything that's at nighttime, but maybe that's the reason why. Maybe we should put a bigger privacy fence. Maybe there's a solution that we could put a bigger privacy fence up. You don't hear the noise or, you know, or something coming from the back end camp. Maybe it's time, instead of putting some monies back there on that, maybe we should put some money on, I mean, we put them back there, we repair the fence, maybe there's something we can do with that fence just to make it a little more privacy and a little more harder to maintain. But like I said, I don't know what the solution is. You know, all I know is I feel we may lose if we shut the encampment down with getting the monies that we do get for Operation Room Key to get some of them out of there that do eventually, you know, end up out there. I don't know. I've got, I've finished everything, what I said. I don't... It's going to make, it's a hard decision on both ways. And Ms. Lewis said we might be blocked. I just have different ideas, different views of it. It's going to be hard either way. It's going to be hard if we unlock, if we open it up, just open it up, it's going to be hard on everybody. Are we still going to get the, yeah, we're going to probably get all the calls. I think we'll probably get more than what we normally would get if we do unlock it because now they're going to be free roam, at least now that we have at least a little control back there in that fence. So that's all I'm going to say. The city manager, oh, I got, Ms. Lewis needs to talk.
Just quickly, Chief Breezy, the Project Room Key is not, is it directly tied to the homeless encampment? Because I think the way it operates, at least as I understand it, that we try to get people to come out of these encampments and go into Project Room Key if they're stable enough and to try to help them maybe get a job, you know? I would hope that they're working with the people to help them understand more life skills. And as I understand, some have gone on to other residents, did get jobs and have a more stable life. But I said earlier, there are homeless and there are homeless. And there are people that you will never get to go in. And I don't know that those people, you know, if an encampment is moved someplace else or closed down, whether that affects us as a community to get possible funding if the state gives it to us for Project Room Key or other types of housing. Yes, you know, the people who want to come in, tiny houses, all those different things are avenues that can help them be able to be stabilized and have their own place to stay. The people who are chronically mentally ill due to drugs, alcohol, or genetically, they need help with treatment and medication, which the state does not allow people to be forced into anymore. So there's a difference in the type of homelessness that we have out there. Some are circumstantial because, you know, a vet, you know, probably had, fell on hard times or whatever, or anybody fell on hard times and ended up homeless. We've had a couple of testimonies tonight from people who have survived that. And we've had other people from our community come in and talk about how they came out of homelessness. But the chronically mentally ill who need treatment, it's a different breed of homelessness. And you can't tie them to us losing funding, at least I don't think, for the, what is it, Project Room Key and any other services that are offered out there. So unless I don't understand this clearly, I never had the understanding that a homeless camp was tied to us getting funding for Project Room Key. Because there are always people that you may be able to get to come in inside and have shelter, get treatment and services, but the chronically mentally ill people generally will never come in unless they're forced in by law, through the courts and into treatment. So there is a difference when you're dealing with the homeless community. Thank you.
Mr. Lamis?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Jones. You bring up some very valid points. I appreciate the dialogue. I appreciate the, some of those thoughts that I hadn't thought about, so I appreciate that. Mayor Pro Temp Lambert, I can see that you're agonizing about this, but you're also coming forth with some ideas and you're being constructive about it, so I appreciate that very, very much. What I'd like to say is that I'm not here to close down this, but to shift it. So I'd like to have that opened up and then have a process of shifting them from where they are now and then moving over. That way, it doesn't preclude us from qualifying for any potential grants again so that we have, it's still in operation. We have set a date to when the other property is open and then we shift the folks over there. And then what we do is we have city personnel grade and clean that area up in order to remove all folks from that area, okay? Not just turn it down and leaving and whoever's there is there. So they're having a little more of a process and be more methodical and direct with some of these folks and using, what we need to do is clean up that area, grade it and prepare it and make sure that it's clean. And in the process of, again, moving those folks over, in that way, hopefully that keeps us from maybe being disqualified from some of those ones, which I don't think are tied to this. I think this is a solid city.
I can answer that one.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Project Room Key is a transitional, non-congregate shelter that was funded or is funded by a state funding source called Emergency Services Grant COVID. It's COVID dollars from the governor's office. Just another layer to the complexity of this issue is that that funding for that program, thanks to you all sitting up here, was extended from about May or June through the end of October. Well, that funding is going to lapse again at the end of October. So behind the closed doors, staff, the city manager have been meeting with council, excuse me, county folks for, I talk to county folks probably weekly about what are we going to do to extend the life of Project Room Key. That's because that's a transitional shelter. What we're talking about, receiving direction to move forward with are longer term solutions. So in the real basic version, you're on the streets homeless. You move into transitional shelters such as Project Room Key or one of the bridging homes. And then from one of those bridging homes or transitional shelters, you move on to longer term facilities, more permanent facilities. And there's a lot of state funding dollars out there to accomplish those things, but they come with a lot of strings. They take a lot of staff time. We've met with the city of Merced. It took them a little over two years to get from the beginning of their process to where they've now got, I don't know, 100 homes, something along that lines, maybe even more. So they've done a good job, but it's very staff intense to get to that point as well. That's what we want to start the process in doing. I know it doesn't fix the problem today, but that's where we want to get to with the direction from you all tonight. There is no connection between Project Room Key and the camp. I don't think there's really a connection between the camps, Project Room Key, and some of these longer term solutions. We are just trying to use the synergy of having all of these things together to push us, propel us towards a longer term solution. We've asked the governor for a direct allocation in the budget. We didn't receive that. We're going back. We've asked for another round of this COVID dollar from the state of California. The mayor has signed a form in support of that for us, the county's effort to get that accomplished. We're just waiting to hear word back from that. There's still hope that we'll get that. But minus that, we're going into these longer term programs for housing our homeless in our community. You are right. You are 100% right. The state has shifted the burden away from them onto the local municipalities to fix the problem. And smaller towns like us are just in the wake of that process. I see the city attorney wants to talk, so I'll let him go.
I don't want to upend the conversation, but I would caution the council tonight not to identify a specific relocation site if that is the pleasure of the council in terms of this entire picture of closure. There is, should be some notice that goes out in terms of that relocation site. And I believe the site that has been discussed tonight may have some environmental concerns and a land use covenant regarding potential residential use on that property. So certainly the item, you have enough information for direction in terms of operation, continued operation or closure, but I don't think there's enough information that's been given tonight and there's not enough of a description on this item to identify an actual relocation site. I believe you could, as part of this though, direct staff to identify some potential relocation sites for further discussion without making a decision to actually relocate to a specific site tonight. If that makes sense, I'll answer any questions about that statement that you would like.
City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Pro Temp. This, I know that Chief Breezy and others have really agonized over this. Even though I've only been here five weeks, I've seen it. As recent as yesterday, when our staff meeting. So, you know, as a former chief executive of the county and human services agency director for four or five years on two occasions, it's real clear to me that, it's clear to everybody. And I think, you know, the council can have disagreements, but I think all of your comments have been helpful. I mean, there's nobody up here that wants to continue to do what we're doing. So the question becomes, are there better practices that we ought to implement? I mean, I'm looking at the chief like I looked at him yesterday in our meeting. I said, well, what are you agonizing over this for? Well, I know why, because there's real people and they're hurting and he feels he's not, can't look inside your head, chief, but he feels he's not presenting the council with a feasible solution. Well, others have spoken, Councilwoman Lewis. The fact that we've done, actually, three studies that I'm aware of statewide of the homeless population, they all reveal the same thing. Conditions that are indigenous almost to the homeless population. One is substance addiction. Two is mental illness, some of it pretty severe. And three is developmental disability. And whether that takes the form of mental, physical, or both, it nonetheless is present and in some individuals, they have all three. So the question becomes, in the midst of all this, we've had what is called the, I'm searching for the name of the city in Idaho.
Boise.
Boise decision, thank you. Which translated means that even though we used to rely upon the county or the state, that now it's been shifted to the local jurisdiction. Chief, is that, is that correct?
I think that's a fair interpretation of...
I mean, that's what I hear all of my compatriots saying. Hey, look, if you got homeless issues, keep trucking. And so what I would say is that our approach has got to be one thing, relentless. You know, the good book says, the poor you are always going to have with you. And boy, isn't that true? So we cannot give up. We absolutely may have some failures along the way, but we've got to keep on doing the best we can. I venture to say, if you take a, I hope, if you take a car and drive through Merced, where I live, or Atwater, where I used to manage, or Livingston, my hat's off to Los Banes. I know the difference. I know the difference. That's not to say everything is peachy keen. It's not. You've got a lot of stuff to do here in the city, but we need ideas. We're going to try some things that probably won't work. Yesterday, as an example, we were doing testing for infectious and communicable disease. And we had the county public health department out here, did we not?
There was a wide range of...
So how many people did we get tested?
Somewhere between 15 and 25.
Okay. Neighborhood of 25, that's pretty good. That's a pretty good response. I mean, I didn't, well, I didn't get on them too bad, but they need to be out here for us as well. The last time we had a major, a major outbreak, an epidemic of tuberculosis, I was serving, you know, I've done everything interim in my life, but I was serving as interim public health director at the county. I'll never forget it. One day, we had a child bit by a rabid bat at John Muir School. The next day, we had a cheerleader in Atwater who passed away due to meningitis. And the third day was the kicker. We got notified we had an epidemic in our grammar schools. Now, this is 1979 and 80. So you need to fact check me on this, chief, but I think the records will show that that's what it is. And we had a wonderful guy by the name of Dr. Charles Mosher. And without him, we wouldn't have survived. He later, well, he later, we had six public health nurses and that's it. Dr. Mosher did such a great job, he married one of them and he became the health officer, I think, in Mariposa County. Okay, I'm done, but this guy's not stopping. I actually asked him to go home yesterday. I said, you know what? You need to rest your body. You can't keep going like this. Do you think he paid any attention? No. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak and honestly, I do appreciate all of your comments because I know they're heartfelt. And we have that kind of stuff, even though we have disagreements, we're going to get stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willman. So I want to clarify something really fast, chief. When I was speaking about the grants and tying it...
Yes, sir.
When we fill out a grant or whoever fills out these grants, when they're seeing that we're trying, we're putting effort to take care of items, whether it affects whatever it is, I feel when we write a grant in that situation, they see, well, hey, they're making an effort. Maybe we should continue helping them. It shows that we are trying to take care, whether it's tied or not. It just shows that we are making an effort to deal with it the best way we can.
That's a good comment.
That's a good comment.
And that's my, I appreciate it. So, uh, we just need clarification on where we need to go with this, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Send it back to Councilmember Jones.
So, Mr. Jones?
So Mayor Protem, you would need a council member to make a motion to remove the homeless encampment. And I guess if there's not a majority, it dies up here and the encampment stays. At least that's what it would appear to be. So that's all.
So it's not asking for a motion? It's just giving direction on how to proceed?
Two items to receive direction on. The closure, the continued operation of the camp is number one. And then the second one is that we would like direction from council to expend staff time and resources on developing program strategies, ideas to bring back to you at a later date to present some better, longer term solutions. I'll give you, the best example is Project Home Key. Project Home Key is another state program that allows you to turn tiny homes, turn hotels into permanent residences that help Stacy's arena numbers. And so, but those are permanent programs run by a private vendor or a partner in the program. I look at the application and some of the process and I shudder to think about being involved in it, but we're going to do it. So that's the second part. So there's two parts to this and we'd appreciate direction on the first and direction on the second.
Okay, so the first one, we're going to have operation and the chair, uh, chair lieutenant entertain a motion for operation. Oh, actually.
To bring back programs or some options for us to continue operation of helping the homeless one way or another.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, I, I wanted to make a comment before the emotion.
Please.
Great, okay. Thank you. Is it possible, along with those two requests for direction, that we also ask you to explore alternate sites?
I don't see why not. I think your direction bill was just, we couldn't identify a site tonight.
So again, the first two and then include a third direction to look for alternate sites.
I think, I think that meshes with the chief's long-term solution issue.
Yeah, that can certainly be one of them.
But I, I want specifically to have a search for an alternate location brought up.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Yeah, as, as long as it's motion that way, I have no problem with that.
I'd like to make a motion for staff to continue looking into operations for the homeless community as well as possible alternative sites for the homeless encampment. And with the criteria of the homeless sites, options, to have a discussion on the actual the locations of them. If any, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones.
So if I can ask the city attorney just for clarification, that it, that meets the needs for both of what we're looking, okay, thank you.
And do I have a second?
Protem, I'll say that.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Jones to continue and search for op, uh, other sites to continue the operation by Jones and second by Councilmember Almas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No? Okay. The, the direction is given?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Very. We're new to move to the next item, item number 11. Councilmember request presentation regarding an overview of the Los Banas Animal Shelter Capital Improvement Plan is brought forth by Councilmember Ms. Lewis. And to be presented by chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and council members. Thank you for the discussion on the previous item. It's, it's draining at times and I, I want to spend a, say a special thank you to Sergeant Mendez and his code enforcement team because they, they really do you proud all the time. We'll move on to a slightly happier item tonight with a brief update on the Animal Shelter Improvement Plan. You're going to have to bear with me on the animations. I tried to make it a little bit more active, interactive for you all as we go through this. As you see there, we're going to start with some history. We have a folder at the police department that has a bunch of information about our current animal shelter. It's made up of two buildings. The original building, from what we can tell, was designed and constructed in the mid 80s. In that folder to the left there, there's a picture that says, description and recommendations for a prototype animal shelter. And that is from the United States Humane Society. Within that booklet are a number of different design variations for animal shelters. There's some language in there about how to operate one. Quite a nice historical document to come upon. To the right there is, the second picture is what was actually constructed out at the shelter. That's what you see. That's the cinder block building that's out there. The main location for our shelter. There's two rooms. The room on the left, the larger room, is comprised of nine full dog kennels. About halfway through those kennels, you, there's a divider, a guillotine divider, and we can split those cells to turn those into 18 smaller cells if the cap, capacity dictates. To the right of the main kennel room is a room that was once used as the animal control officer's office. There's a wooden desk that we still use today. There's approximately 17 cat kennels in that room. There's a small kitchenette for food prep and there's a storage room for other related services that go along with the shelter out there. In the 1990s, we, the city programmed, installed a mobile building, a single wide trailer as an office space. And that's really the catalyst for this whole idea. That building is at the end of its life. We have painted it and painted it and fixed it and repaired leaks over the years. It's not designed like a single family residence or structured to last as long as a single family home is. It's, it's time to repair that building and it needs to be replaced. So that was brought in and added to the original shelter in, in the mid 1990s. Then in the early 2000s, about 2004, we added 12 exterior kennels. You can see nine of the kennels there. In the background, there's a wooden fence and on the other side of that wooden fence, there's three more kennels. They house quarantine dogs, exotic animals that we run across occasionally, but they're separated. So that is what makes up our shelter today. The original building from the 80s, the single wide building in the 90s and those external kennels in the 2000s. Let's talk about the current project. In March of 2022, resolution number 6468 was approved by the city council. It was a mid-year budget amendment for fiscal year 2122. That's the year that just ended, June 30th. One of the approved expenditures was $20,000 for the design and site engineering work for the animal shelter office space. Initial projected budget estimate at the time was about $250,000. And the remaining portion of that budget after that initial design and site work was completed would come forward in this fiscal year. The initial project included a new office space. We're actually going to move it. If you go back to that picture there, the oval picture, we're going to move the office space to increase site security and close the campus just a little bit. We're going to make some ADA improvements, some needed ADA improvements that have been identified in part of our ADA, ADA inspections. And so between those three things, we're going to try and push that forward, get all of those items completed. And if there is any extra money, my God, we were going to throw it towards the shelter to do more. I'm going to stop there for a second because I've already forgotten to do this. I want to thank Jason and Mariah because they do a fantastic job. There is a couple of comments I want to address for the council's information. Yes, Jason is on a much needed vacation and unfortunately COVID still exists and our staff are affected by COVID and we've got multiple staff members out. We just learned that one of our staff members was caught by COVID today. So yes, we are adapting to the situation and we're making the best of it with the staff that we have. And there was also a comment that I picked up on last meeting about the code enforcement page being out of date on the website. The next day I went back to staff and said, we need to fix that immediately. And I was told I was sitting here that that project was completed yesterday, but we will go back and look at it tomorrow to make sure that it is up to date. But it is up to date as, as far as I know. Okay, so moving on to the third bullet point. We get direction from council, we get approved the funding in March and April. Staff meets out at the site, out at the shelter to start discussions for site design and a path forward on how we're going to do this with the money that we've got. We're all excited about it. And then in May, between the period of May and July of 2022, as we're going through the budget process, preparing to bring it to you in June, we start talking more about the shelter. Well, we come to find out the budget for the shelter goes from $250,000 up to a million dollars. That budget is approved by the council, thank you very much, in June, and the budget became effective last month. So we have a million dollars in the budget. We're excited to move forward with it, but a million dollars is a big difference in a plan than compared to $250,000. So what are the next steps? Right now, this project is in its infancy. The commander is in charge of animal control and he has volun, been voluntold that he's going to be taking this project on. He's excited about doing it, working with Neron and his staff at Public Works. And we're moving forward with it, but it's in its infancy. We just approved, we're excited to get it going, but we're just getting there. It's a larger capital project, a million dollars is a lot of taxpayer dollars. And that necessitates engaging with some engineering consulting firms to make sure that we develop a long-term plan that's effective for the growth of our shelter and our community while still being fiscally responsible. That process will include community, council, staff engagement, picture of public forums where we get input from the community on what we can do with a million dollars and we're going to try and go out and do that. But go back to those three considerations. We still need to make sure that those three considerations are addressed. We need to replace that office space. Our staff need a efficient office space to work in. The idea is to provide a, a little bit larger office space than what we have now, and I'll get to that in just a moment. Again, ADA requirements that we need to make and then some site security considerations that we'd like to address as well. Those additional conversations and additional considerations are a separate room, separate building for dogs and cats. Currently, as we saw in that first picture, they're all in the same building. We learned from our work in our needs assessment for the police department building that it's not as productive to have dogs and cats in the same building. They can be separated by a wall, but the anxiety that it causes cats sometimes can be detrimental to their health. So we want to recognize that. So we're going to have a conversation about separate spaces for dogs and cats. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. We're open to ideas. We'd like to have a quarantine space to separate the sick from the healthy. So technically, that could be up to four different spaces. A space for healthy dogs, space for healthy cats, a space for sick dogs and a space for sick cats. So four different spaces. A public reception area, an adoption space where a family comes in and wants to adopt a dog, they can do it inside in inclement weather. They can do it if it's a small dog. They can just sit around and enjoy some time with an animal prior to the adoption process. We want a small animal center. I've seen other jurisdictions that have small animal centers that are a little bit more friendly to the public. They draw the public into these spaces to make adoption more, a little bit more appealing. There's nothing cuter than a little tiny dog that wants to get picked up by a family in our community. So we want to look at that and explore that idea. And the last one, and again, these are just early ideas that we're talking about at a very high level, is storage areas. The community's growing, the shelter's growing. We have to have some idea of growth for our storage, for food preparation, food storage in a safe environment so that the elements and rodents and such don't get to them. Those are just some of the ideas for this capital project. This is not, as of yet, a project that's dealing with staff or personnel. I've heard the comments that we have, we, we're doing the best of what we can with the staff that we have. And I'm darn proud of both of them and all of our staff at the police department that, that control our animal shelter. So that is really where we're at. That concludes my presentation. I figured I'd end on a high note and thank God I added this last slide. This is the 2022 winner for the ugliest dog competition from the Sonoma Marin County Fair. I forget his name. They said his name in the article and I forget his name, but that's the winner right there. I'd be happy to answer any questions. As far as process, we will be turning this program over to the public works department to help guide us through some of the stages that we need to go through. We've already talked to Neron about it and like I said, we're, we're pretty excited to get going on it. That's all I have for this presentation.
I'll go through staff. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Chief Breezy, thank you for the presentation. I just want to start off with this comment. And when I was at the Fresno Home Show this spring, they always have a section for animals and mostly dogs. Yeah, I, I don't recall if I saw any cats there, but mostly dogs. And they, you know, they bring out their cages and some little glass inserts where people can look at the animals and, you know, ooh and ah at them. But it, it's very attracting and addicting to people when they see these small puppies or dogs that no one wants. But there, you know, there's a real specific criteria in adopting those, those animals. It's like you got to pay for the spading and the neutering and blah, blah, this and that and the other and, and a cost for just them putting on the program. And most people seem to be really amenable to do that. So I was just, you know, sitting here having a brainstorm. I, I don't know if the city could work with the Chamber of Commerce to set up a booth at the cham, at the street fair to possibly work on something like that and not necessarily depend on the vouchers, but have people pay for the services upfront so that we can assure that animals that are going into homes are already spayed and neutered and, you know, not worrying about somebody taking a voucher that's out of, out of service now for the city and them not using it. We had a item on the consent agenda tonight for, and this is a little bit off the beat, for aviation services, on-call airport engineer services. And this was to, for future planning and projects and designing and bidding and grants and various other, other things that need to go on. So when I read that in conjunction with the animal shelter, I became of the opinion that the airport is not going anywhere for a very, very, very long time. And even if it did, it would take 25 or 30 years to get it out of here or even longer. So with that in mind, I think it would be appropriate as a city that we really start to move forward and look at planning for an animal shelter, to build something that's going to be amenable to our, our community and last, and have enough room to accommodate the animals that, that are brought in. And thereby perhaps we could have, you know, engage with a doctor for spaying and neutering and any other services that we might be able to, to get to help us have a viable shelter. So I'm excited to hear about this tonight. And especially when I, you know, with the, the project that, uh, um, Neron presented tonight, just kind of say, hey, the airport's not going anywhere. I don't, I don't see that happening. And so why can't we move forward with building a shelter rather than putting up something that's just going to be temporary again, but really doing something that's going to work for our community? And I would invite the community out there and those who are listening to try to go seek some private money. Help us out. Don't just come and complain. Help us with solutions. I've had people come to me and, and, and bring some solutions of some businesses in our community that are willing to help us to acquire some major products to put in, in our shelters, air conditions and on and on. So we have some people out there already that are willing to donate to this. We just have to put this plan together and. We just have to put this plan together and see how quickly we can make it happen. So that's just kind of my take on it. And again, I appreciate you bringing forth this information, but we need the community's help. It's just not the council sitting up here. I'll give you an example. In Morgan Hill where I used to live, when they built their park, and there's a monument to their dog park up there, the community wanted a dog park. And so the council said, we have the land, but we don't have the money to build it. We don't have it in the budget. So if you want it, go out there and get private money. And that's exactly what the community did. They went and got the private money to build that dog park. The city gave them the land because they owned it, but they had to get it funded privately to get built. So we need help from the community. When you come with these ideas, just don't come and expect that the general fund budget is going to buy everything for you. We need help doing what needs to be done in the city of Lost Mountains. So great idea and, you know, I look forward to the plans with Public Works and our police department moving forward on this. And thank you again for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
Mr. Mayor Protem, may I make a comment? We went down the road of a brand-new facility in 2018 when we went, we did the police department and that picture there is directly out of the needs assessment that was created by our vendor at the time. It's built in two phases. When you consider things like, and now of course it escapes me, prevailing wage and some of the other constructions costs that go on. This was a 2018 document, if I recall correctly. It estimates phase one at about, I think, 8,000 square feet. Now I can't see it. And then phase two, a little bit larger than that. And the total cost is about $12 million for a righteously constructed facility. I'm down to go down that road all day long with you because our community deserves something like that. And that has medical rooms and all the things that you talked about. We're happy to have $1 million. I just wanted to share that because I was originally going to put it in my presentation, but I thought I tend to go too long as it is anyway, so I took it out at the last minute in favor of the picture of the dog.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lamas?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, again for the presentation. In your fact-finding, have you engaged with like members of the public who do this volunteer work and part of nonprofit organizations? Have you engaged with them to ensure that we're maximizing the few dollars that we have, that we're using it to its full potential for the betterment and improvement of the dogs and animals and other, dogs and cats and other animals? Are we doing that?
Are we engaging with other organizations on the two individuals, our two workers now? Is that what the question was?
With nonprofits and folks like Mrs. Klein who have extensive knowledge in not only our facility, but other facilities, best practices, things that we can, again, bring those, that knowledge and apply it here. So again, so we're maximizing what we have and things that work and learning from things that didn't work and applying those here.
No, we have not reached out to those organizations with the current staffing that we have. I recall an email that we received not too long ago from an individual who was upset with the service that he had received or didn't receive at the animal shelter and had to do with like a phone call. And yeah, we get the employees for 40 hours a week. One generally stays on the road. One is there to try and keep the shelter open as much as they can and do adoptions and clean the shelter and do all of those things. We, obviously you can optimize things a little bit, but it's a pretty tight ship considering there's only two people out there. I appreciate the comments that there should be more staffing out there. I think that's.
That's where I'm concerned, where, you know, we have staff, they're trying to do the best they can. They're focused on the immediacy of the problem that they're taking care of. And then now we're asking them to help design a facility, which takes a lot of thought, a lot of, you know, deliberation and processes in order to come up with. So again, if we could reach out and relieve that burden on our employees to come up with these solutions, again, make them the part of the roundtable, but bring in these best practices that folks can bring us.
So if I, yeah, if I'm understanding the direction you're going in, yes, that'll be part of the process with this is that we'll reach out to anyone in the community who would like to attend a workshop on the design of it.
The final note is that those are $2,018, correct?
Yeah.
On that facility?
Yeah, I threw up about, what is it, 16% inflation over the last couple of years or what? I don't know if I'm right at all, so I'll backtrack on that.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamas. Chief, I know you know that I've had some background.
Yeah.
In animal control. I, we work a whole totally different style than how we work here. I do like to, would like to see the staffing not necessarily being an officer that maintains the area. I think we need to find, and this would be something that's going to be there every day, whether it's two or three. You have someone that works the front, someone that cleans, someone takes care of the animals. That frees up our animal control officers to actually be proactive throughout the city to do their job. But that's the way we worked, you know, in the past. I do know we do need to do, like you said, with that meeting, we need to look into some major improvements. I think the way we worked, we had an intake side, we had adoption side. I'm not sure if that's how, I think we go off of tags, whether they're adoptable or not adoptable inside there right now. We had cat rooms that were air-conditioned just because felines are a little bit harder to keep cool. So we always had air-conditioned rooms for the felines. I know we're going in the right direction.
Yeah.
We're going to get there to get the right people to start making the right choice, or not choices, but the right ideas to get this thing rolling. I do think staffing is a big deal though, one of the bigger parts. That way it frees up our, just having to, you know, having, you know, I know we have volunteers, but we can't rely on the volunteers every day. So I think somehow, I think even with the staff, I think we need to look into possibly coming up, I mean, it's job opportunities.
The finance department isn't going to like me saying this, but I'm going to go ahead and record what you all are saying and I will be presenting it to them at midyear to have that conversation.
We need, we got job opportunities everywhere. We just got to get them here.
Yeah. That is difficult. We are having a difficult time attracting.
And I totally understand that. But that's, we definitely need that in that location also.
If I may speak to the volunteer situation, we had a very strong volunteer group until a few years back when they decided to retire and move out of state. And we appreciate the rescues that we have. Certainly they help improve our numbers and get animals out at a much quicker pace than we could at our rate alone. As far as street fairs and things like that, we used to have a strong presence. They would walk in the May Day Parade and unfortunately the volunteerism hasn't quite as been as strong. We've got a couple of volunteers, not including the rescues. The rescue groups do a very great job at what they're doing. I'm not referring to them. There's a young lady that come up one time a few months ago and had mentioned something about the shelter and I hit her up afterwards. I'm like, I've never seen your application. Why don't you come volunteer? And she's like, well, I foster a bunch of cats for you. Say no more. You're doing enough. So anyways, volunteerism has changed a little bit. So we're looking forward to this.
Appreciate it, Chief. And I believe this was just, there's no action needed on this item.
No, just an informational item from Mrs. Lewis.
If anybody else has any questions, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
So this is going to be advisement of public notices and there's no notices at this time. We'll go to our item 13, City Manager Report, and we'll go to our City Manager, Mr. Wilton.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. I'll keep it short and I'm available to answer questions, at least those that I can. I should point out that today we finished up interviewing for our fire chief. That's about all I'm going to say on that until we have something of substance for you. I want to pay tribute to Commander Rena, who's been tremendous to work with on that. He's been setting all this stuff up and, as they say in the trade, setting them up and knocking them down. We really appreciate his efforts. So in the next, well, I'm hoping that in the next week we can give you some further enlightenment on that. Should also point out that we've had productive meetings with Neron and Stacy and others with CCID. And they've involved in a number of things, but the water, and I'm not just talking about freshwater, I'm talking about wastewater, stormwater and freshwater that this community has got to plan for or lack thereof is going to be very, very critical for the future. We're in the middle of doing a general plan update. Stacy can give you more information on that. But we're... Well, what more can I say? It's 103 to 108 today and I don't know what it is now. So I think with that, I'm going to abbreviate my remarks here and just say that we're mindful of the health issues that are within the city. I know some of you have asked me to get some things going in terms of healthcare services. I'm not sure what, really what form or fashion that might take. But if that's a council priority, then, you know, we'll do our best. That's it.
Appreciate it, Mr. Wilman. All right, we'll move to the next item, which we do not have Mayor Faria here for this item, for the report update in Merced County. So we'll go to the next item, the City Council Member Reports, and we'll start off with Rafugio Alamos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just want to say, I appreciate the candid conversation we had tonight regarding various issues. I think it was productive. Hopefully we continue that, that positive contribution to resolving the city's issues. Water, yeah, water's a major issue as we have this lack of rainfall. It's going to have residual long-term effects on our water tables, which I believe the city primarily relies on is wells. And that I think is something that we need to start considering or make sure that we add to our discussion when considering annexing property and developing, et cetera. Next item is I want to apologize to the firms that came out today to interview. They came out with the understanding that we were going to take some action and we did not. Unfortunately, the votes weren't there, but I do want to apologize to them for taking the time out and I appreciate each and every one of them for interviewing and willing to answer our questions. And to the folks experiencing the issues with the homeless encampment, we'll continue to work this issue. Your concerns are not lost on me. However, again, council took a different direction that I don't believe is going to, while it's not addressing your immediate concerns and unfortunately you're still dealing with those issues right now. And it just doesn't sit right with me, but just didn't have the direction that I think that we could have had tonight. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamas. Councilmember Jones?
No report, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. It's my turn. So I want to appreciate everyone that come out, everyone that did a presentation. Awesome job today. There's a lot still going on with this city. It's, it's not easy to make some of the decisions that we have to make. But we make them the best we can and we make them towards the good of the city. We just have to keep pushing. And if we don't keep pushing, we're not going to get nowhere. So that's all I have to say tonight and we'll move to Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. I appreciate our staff and the time that they've put in to give us the reports. I know things are stressful right now for a lot of reasons in our community, in our state, in our nation. And I just want them to know that, you know, I appreciate what you do and support you. We do have a lot of work ahead of us and I hope for the betterment of the community that this council can come together and work together and stop accusing each other of one thing or another or feeding information to the community that may not be true and making it believable. We have too many issues that we have to solve rather than playing games like that. And it doesn't serve the community any good to come forth and do that kind of stuff. So our staff is working hard and we need to support them. And I just want them to know that you have my support, even though I come on strong with a lot of ideas sometimes, it's because I'm concerned about the community as a whole. And I appreciate all the work that you do. It's not without thought and not without me being just, you know, concerned about what you do on a daily basis. It's hard. It's a lot more pressure on you out there now than what it was when I was in the workforce 17 years ago. And there's some people out there, sitting out there today that have been retired for a long time. Things have changed. And so we have to be mindful of the changes that are going on and how do we, how do we work within those changes? How do we keep our community safe and people as happy as we can help them be without destroying what we've, what we've made progress in? So with that, I, again, I want to thank staff for their reports tonight and I look forward to the progress that we're going to move forward with. And we just need to be mindful that we were elected here to make tough decisions. It's not going to be easy. Otherwise, we shouldn't be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. We'll go down to our item number 16, Closed Session. Conference with a legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to 54956 dot nine, Section B. One potential case. Once we're done with closed session, we'll return for adjournment.